The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good morning, Mr Singleton.
Good morning Commissioners. This morning's witness is Dr Daniel Mealy. He's in the witness box. In a few moments, I will tender documents related to this session and ask that Dr Mealy be sworn or affirmed. Before I actually go to those formalities, might I just yield for any other housekeeping matters that any parties want to raise?
Commissioners, I have leave to appear relating to an Order 33 on the 24th of August. It's WIDJAJA, initial J.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the issue of parliamentary privilege has arisen from time to time and is affected by this statement. I will be tendering Dr Mealy's statement in a few moments. It's convenient to get out of the way the bits that I won't be tendering, just so that it's clear on the record. The Commonwealth made a number of claims of parliamentary privilege in recent times, most of which we accept are accurate claims. When I tender the statement, I will tender paragraph 416 only insofar as it reads, Lieutenant General John Calagari AODSC retired, and also says, quote, "to a Senate Standing Committee, the Foreign Affairs Defence and Trade References Committee," unquote. But I will not otherwise tender the statement either confidentially or openly. In respect of paragraph 417, I will tender only the words, "to this same Senate Standing Committee, a veteran submitted." You can see the effects on screen at the moment, and I thank the operator for that. Of paragraph 426, I will tender only the first sentence but not the balance, and I do not tender footnote 70. That doesn't cover everything that the Commonwealth threw to our attention, so I just pause for a moment to see whether anybody wishes to raise any additional issues in this regard.
There's nothing further. We've raised the matters that we consider may raise parliamentary privilege issues, and it's a matter for the Commission to determine those matters.
Thank you, Ms Moore. Thank you.
Is this one of the issues that's being added to a list that may or may not be dealt with in a direction's hearing in Sydney?
This now does not appear to be any controversy that any party wishes to agitate.
Okay, thanks.
It is, as you know from litigation, no doubt, not uncommon for matters to be resolved at the last moment, as has now occurred. Let me then begin with the substance of this morning's hearing. And may I begin by opening with a few remarks to introduce Dr Mealy. He's a practising medical practitioner who served in the Army Reserves from 2002 and as a captain in the Australian Regular Army from 2007 to 2015. The first part of his evidence will recount some of his own experiences in the Army and after his separation from the Army, including the deleterious effects that they had. The second part of his evidence will report insights that he has gained from his own research into issues relevant to suicide and suicidality among members and ex-members of the ADF. Some aspects of Dr Mealy's experiences with the Army are, or at least were, the subject of controversy at the time. To a significant extent, for the purposes of these opening remarks, I have relied on conclusions reached by the Office of the Commonwealth Ombudsman who examined a number of issues in 2015 and 2016. A career aim of Dr Mealy was to become an emergency physician. His evidence is that he was led to believe that the ADF would permit him to become an emergency physician. The Army, however, would later tell the Ombudsman that Dr Mealy was merely being aspirational and was in any event unrealistic, propositions that the Ombudsman rejected. The Ombudsman, while finding that the Army's career development policies are not necessarily imprecise, found that Dr Mealy was presented with, quote, "information about career opportunities that tended to misinform him," unquote. Dr Mealy was deployed to Afghanistan in September 2014. Around that time, he also applied for a position at an Australian tertiary hospital to train as an emergency physician, a position which he won on merit after considerable competition. He made repeated efforts to have the Army give him approval to accept the position, but he did not succeed even in getting a decision. As the deadline for acceptance approached, Dr Mealy signed the relevant contract with the hospital. He tried to email it, but it bounced back. As he did not yet have approval from the Army, he did not try again and never entered into a contract with the hospital, and he lost the position that he had won on merit. Nevertheless, as a result of merely signing the document and also as a result of inaccurate understanding of his actions, Dr Mealy was recalled to Australia. According to the ADF at the time, in dealing with the Ombudsman, Dr Mealy's recall to Australia was what was called an "early return to Australia." This is a procedure that is, as the Army put it at the time, generally not used for an administrative sanction, but rather routinely used to allow a member to take up a posting or attend career courses. According to the ADF at the time, "early return to Australia does not attract requirements of natural justice." The ADF distinguished early return from compulsory return to Australia, which is a procedure for withdrawing personnel from operations for the purpose of administrative or disciplinary sanction and which is attended by several natural justice requirements. The ADF indicated to the Ombudsman that Dr Mealy's recall was an early return, not a compulsory return. However, upon his return, Dr Mealy was not permitted to take up the position in the hospital that he had won. Rather, he was charged with disobedience in respect of signing the contract. He was not afforded procedural fairness in respect of the decision to recall him from Australia. According to the Army, Dr Mealy had abrogated the right to procedural fairness by his action in signing the contract. Commissioners, that a procedure routinely used to facilitate participation in courses was in this case used in a punitive way to facilitate disciplinary action against a member for trying to take up a training opportunity might strike you as Kafkaesque. So too might the proposition that alleged guilt means that procedural fairness is not required. That proposition is antithetical to all common understanding of justice, especially given its contribution to suicidality. You might well regard it as a matter of concern to you. I anticipate that you will hear evidence of these matters and some other aspects of Dr Mealy's own experiences. I shall then seek or ask him to draw attention in relatively brief fashion compared to the detail in his statement to various topics in respect of which he has undertaken his own research. We do not call Dr Mealy as an expert witness in respect of each of these individual issues. Rather, we call him as a medical practitioner with experience in the Army, including on deployment, who has examined a range of issues relevant to suicide and suicidality among defence members of veterans. Even though we do not call Dr Mealy as an expert in respect of the individual issues, we do contend that he's sufficiently qualified to raise these issues as one's worthy of examination and as an appropriate witness to introduce those topics briefly to you. Might Dr Mealy be sworn or affirmed?
Do you, Daniel Mealy, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Sir, could you tell the Royal Commission your full name?
My name is Dr Daniel Mealy.
I describe you as a medical practitioner, is that true?
That's correct.
And is there anything that you would wish to correct or add or detract from the remarks that I just made to the Commissioners? Any mistake there in particular?
No, counsel.
Might this morning's tender list be brought up? I thank the operator for that. It's marked and shaded in the usual way. I tender the documents listed in the way that they have been signified as either public or private.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of numbers, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the operator to bring up Dr Mealy's statement. It's got the code number DAM0001001. Dr Mealy, is this the covering page with the redaction of the statement you've prepared for the Royal Commission?
That's correct.
To the best of your knowledge and ability, are the contents true and correct?
Correct.
I'll ask the operator to go to page four, and we'll just highlight or expand the section Background and Paragraphs 4 to 7. I mentioned some of these matters in the opening, Doctor, but is it the case that you studied biomedical science in 2000? I'm sorry, while in the reserves and graduated?
Correct.
And around about the time you joined the Regular Army, did you also commence a Bachelor of Medicine and Bachelor of Surgery degree at the University of Melbourne?
Correct.
And the University of Melbourne is considered a distinguished university, especially by people in this city?
I would say so, yes.
And you graduated in 2011?
Correct.
I'll ask the operator to go to page eight of the statement. And if we could expand Paragraphs 39 to 44. You outline here a little bit about your recruitment experience and that you were led to believe that you would be permitted to become an emergency physician. Could you just outline whether that caused you to do anything in your life and in your career in the years that followed?
Thanks, counsel. I think I should point out that for a medical professional going through the graduate medical scheme, the time course for that is roughly between 10 and 15 years. So the information that I was provided in recruitment started in 2002. We're talking about 21 years ago. And subsequently, reapplying for the, or applying for the graduate medical scheme four years later, whilst I was commencing medicine, that was my second conversations with recruitment, defence recruitment. And I formed the view in both of those, or maybe one of those, recruitment drives that I would be able to specialise in emergency medicine.
Can you just give us a brief overview of your observations and work as an Army doctor when still in Australia, before you were deployed overseas?
Before I was deployed, firstly, I was only in uniform for six months before I was deployed. I was two years out of university. I was used to a tempo of long hours. I was doing about 113-hour weeks during my internship and suddenly found myself at a decreased tempo of exposure to potential patients. The first three or four months of my training in uniform were largely centred around logistics training and officer training as well. I think that makes most medical officers quite nervous. Taking two weeks away from clinical encounters has a deleterious effect on skilling and upskilling, but to have three or four months away from seeing patients is quite stressful. The Defence Force, in my induction, in my orientation week, I'd only just found out in a few months prior to that that I was not able to specialise in emergency medicine. That would have to be general practice training. In the orientation, there were nine or 10 doctors all up, I believe there were 10, and a brigadier walked in and congratulated one of the members for her successful application into an ICU training programme, and we were all clapped, we were invited to applaud her for that. However, the remaining nine, incidentally, who were all male doctors, were told that we could not specialise. Moving forward from that, I think we all had to just accept the fact that there was inherent unfairness in this, but we started our GP training soon after that four-month period or three-month period of logistics training. The exposure on a military base to patients was predominantly 21-year-old males, which is great. I mean, I know a lot about 21-year-old males in healthcare now, but when it comes to the need to be exposed to geriatric population, paediatrics, and women's health, it puts a medical officer in the Defence Force at a disadvantage to pass fellowship exams the following year. The Defence Force made arrangements with local civilian medical practices for registrars, medical registrars, to work in a civilian setting. However, I found that because there was no continuum of care with civilian patient population, nobody really wanted to see us. And so there were whole days where I would sit in a civilian GP practice and not see one patient. So I want to impress upon you how stressful it is for someone who has dedicated 12 years to training to be a good doctor. There's a lot you give up in that timeframe, while everyone else is making a life for themselves and having fun and then going on holidays. I mean, it's quite a disciplined course of dedicated training and study to become a doctor, to suddenly find yourself de-skilling from an organisation that is trying to help with clinical skilling. For it to be not the case is very stressful.
All right. I want to move to the fact that you were deployed to Afghanistan in 2014. I'll ask the operator to move to page nine, and if we could expand Paragraphs 46 and 47 just to introduce this topic. You say here that you were sent to Kabul alone, and with all respect, relatively junior in your career, and were sent there in a capacity as a GP registrar. When you say alone, can I just ask what, if any, other ADF personnel of a healthcare kind were with you in any practical sense in Kabul?
Look, there was no one, but I do want to say that in Defence Force favour, I had a fantastic OC, Major Sarah Malloy. She really did understand a lot of things that were happening to me as I signed up with the Defence Force, I put on my uniform, and she was very insightful, and she pushed very hard for me to be deployed. And it was a reward and it was an incentive to keep me in defence, and I'm very grateful for that. However, before I was sent to Afghanistan, there were 96 American doctors on base in Kabul. So at the time I was sent there, it was considered feasible and a great training opportunity for a junior doctor to be sent there under the care of 96 potential supervising doctors. But I don't think that there was oversight of the fact that by the time I got there, there were already plans underway to remove those 96 doctors, or most of them, and send them to Iraq with the...
We're going to come to that. I just want to stick with this early...
But I've said alone, yeah.
Before you had arrived in Afghanistan, were you given any particular additional training to prepare you?
Commissioners, I'm sorry to interrupt my friend. I understand the feed needs to be cut for a moment. If that could be done, please.
We'll cut the feed.
The witness referred to a name a moment ago. It's happened now. Yes. I don't have the transcript, but I did hear the name.
You happy for that to be redacted?
What we would say is this. We do not consider it necessary to interrupt witnesses when they praise someone. This witness has just given high plaudits to the person in question. Now, there may be some matter that requires redaction. Last week, we had a witness who was interrupted after giving high praise to an ADF, or at least defence person. I would urge the Commonwealth to restrain itself from making interruptions, particularly of witnesses for whom it is a challenge rather than a regular event to be giving evidence, unless there is a real need actually to protect the person. There should not be an automatic proposition that naming a person below a certain rank can't occur. By all means, if a person is criticised, and I don't pick up the slip, then we need to cut the feed and not publish criticisms of individuals. Now, I'm not encouraging the witness to name lots of people, but when a witness in passing gives high praise to a person, unless there's some particular reason why that cannot be in the public domain, there should be no objection. I don't know whether there's a particular reason for protecting this person from this praise, so I'm technically neutral on the matter. But at a level of principle, witnesses should not be interrupted without good cause.
Do you wish to respond to that?
Commissioners, the only point I'll make is that we don't know what the witness's position is. I appreciate the point that there was not a criticism that was made of the witness on that occasion, but the names have been redacted in the statement. In my submission, it's appropriate that we take a consistent position of not naming the witnesses, not naming other third parties who have not had an opportunity to deal with the Commissioner.
Hardly likely to damage them, though, if they're being praised.
Well, they're being praised now. It's possible that having been identified something else that's not positive might be about them. I don't know. My submission is just safer that they not be named consistently with the position taken in the statement.
I would ask that the feed resume.
We're happy for this evidence to remain intact and not redacted.
Thank you, Commissioners. Might the feed resume?
Yes.
Sorry, Dr Mealy, I had actually asked you whether you had received any training particular to preparing you for deployment, whether it was about the local environment or the nature of the medical services you'd have to give in a war zone or anything else. Did you get any particular training in advance?
Yeah, we did. I was sent for an EMST course, Early Management of Severe Trauma course. It's a four-day course in first aid for doctors preparing for trauma, as well as the usual preparations that everybody gets before being sent into a combat zone.
Thank you. In light of your experiences in Kabul, looking back on it, was a GP registrar the most appropriate kind of specialty? Or is it small s specialty? Or might there have been some other particular specialties that would have been particularly valuable to send to Kabul?
Hindsight is a wonderful thing, but in hindsight, it should have been an emergency advanced trainee sent into that role. Again, I don't want to paint the Defence Force unfairly here that they assumed that there would be 96 doctors there to support me, but that quickly became evident that they would not be there. And so there was a delay of about four months in which I did not have appropriate clinical supervision, and an emergency advanced trainee would have been more appropriate.
I might ask the operator to go to page 53 of the statement, and we'll display Paragraphs 312 to 315 to introduce the topic. Here, as you mentioned a few moments ago, you say that you were embedded in a NATO hospital, particularly an American trauma team in a hospital in Kabul. And as you said a few moments ago, 96 military doctors from the United States were on base at the beginning. But two weeks into the deployment, many were redeployed to Iraq. Can I just ask you to comment on the adequacy of the medical resources available to support you and your colleagues' work before and after that change with the Iraqi deployment?
From a resources perspective, the Americans left with great haste and much of the, or some, I should say, of the important medical equipment was damaged, broken. I recall that there were medications that were out of date, out of expiry date. We've already touched upon the personnel aspects. I mean, if we had one severe trauma case, it was all hands on deck. I had two general practitioners, or American equivalent, which is family practitioner, doctors there working with me, and I believe three or four nurses and a couple of medics. If we had one severe trauma of one case, then it was all hands on deck, but we had no nurses for aftercare. We had no radiologist to do a CT scan. We had no blood transfusion protocol. We had a rudimentary pathologist capability. If we had any more than one casualty, we would have exhausted everything that we had. And when you consider that the foreseeable casualties that we could have received from the frequent rocket attacks that were being directed at our base, not that any landed fortunately on our base, but preparing for that would have required a greater number of doctors, nurses, radiologists, pathologists, wardsmen, cleaners, everything, we needed everything.
All right. I'll just get the operator to go to page 55 and display Paragraphs 325 and 326. You just started to mention a bit of the operating environment. Could you just remind us or elaborate on what was the military and geographical environment in which all this was happening?
We were experiencing quite a number of vehicular improvised explosive device attacks on apartment vehicles, mostly on American vehicles, quite close to our base, which, I mean, the Taliban had a tactic of creating massive trauma from one explosive device. And their observation that Westerners would come in and rush in to help, they would quite often have a secondary explosion, killing other members who were assisting to help. What this meant for us on base was that I would not get a casualty for sometimes two hours after the event, even though the event took place relatively nearby. It would take quite a while for a special forces team or infantry teams to secure the area prior to extraction of...
Thank you. It looks like we may be having a blackout on the screen, but I'm going to take you to page 54. I can see we have recovered technically now. If we go to page 54 and if we display Paragraphs 317 and 318, here you mention that the hospital was under-resourced and underskilled, as you've already mentioned this morning. Could you just outline what you did in response to the under-resourcing?
Because I was not the first responder, I did train the first responders twice a week. Because I was not the first responder, I did train the first responders twice a week. In fact, I brought together special forces teams from Australia, America, Norway, and a few of the other countries present, and trained them twice weekly in trauma management, including, we didn't have any resources to train them as we do in a tertiary hospital in Australia with mannequins and dummies, et cetera, to practise intravenous cannulations and chest strains, et cetera. I can recall a number of occasions training these guys and using my body, my veins, to allow them to practise intravenous cannulations. And whilst I've been criticised by that back home, I think I need to point out that we were in a war zone and death was foreseeably a possibility for all of us. And my motivations were not only to save the lives of, help save the lives of the personnel that these special forces were trying to save, but I was trying to protect their mental health from foreseeable PTSD later with the trauma of allowing people to die on their hands with inadequate skill set to be looking after them.
Could I? And with this simple characterisation, you're right. To make up for the lack of medical resources, you were trying to enhance the first aid capabilities of soldiers.
Correct.
If we could just expand paragraph 318 of the many on the page. Were you also sending reports back to Australia about the lack of resourcing? What were you doing in that regard?
I was sending weekly situation reports, sit reps, back through my chain of command. I was copying in the military. I mean, they weren't my chain of command. I was working for NATO, I was working for the Americans. It was a very loose chain of command structure, to be honest. I had no idea who I was working for. But I was copying the situation reports to the Australian command presence on base, as well as to my clinical supervisor, I guess you could call him, who was based in Al Minhad. Situation reports that detailed on a weekly basis the need for a dentist, dental assistant, nurse, doctors, et cetera, et cetera.
If we look at paragraphs 319, 2021, also on this page, you give a brief account of the responses you got from your weekly reports and your other efforts to draw attention to the lack of resources. Could you just describe the contrast between what your medical supervising chain and how your military command chain responded to the concerns you were raising?
Certainly. Firstly, my clinical supervisor, his specialty was occupational physician who specialised in workers' comp. His response to me was...
Can I just ask, without going into detail, but maybe just mention a continent or two, where was this supervisor of yours?
In the UAE, in Al Minhad.
Carry on.
He asked me on one occasion to, I mean, there was no direct response to any of my situation reports from him. He asked me on one occasion to write him an essay about all the positive things about being a general practitioner, registrar in a war zone. I mean, to me, this, I can't explain that level of dissonance.
You got a different response, did you not, from the military command?
I did, I did. The Australian Military Command, I sought their ear and they heard my case. And within four months, I had more or less an appropriate medical team supporting me, without a psychologist, I might add.
I'll ask the operator to display the next two paragraphs, 322 and 323. Based on your experience in Kabul, could you just give us an overview of the... No, withdraw that. How, you just mentioned that the extra resources that eventually came didn't include a psychologist. How significant do you regard that omission to be?
Look, I was piquing with anxiety at what was happening. And it wasn't so much the trauma cases. I mean, I think the people who would, the people who died would have died irrespective of who was looking after them. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I was just wondering how, whether there was a need for psychological support to be deployed.
Yeah. I had a number of members, soldiers, and one senior officer who were acutely suicidal. I mean, these cases are very challenging to deal with because, I mean, if you raise the red flag of suicide, they're immediately sent home, which is not done in a way that is in the members' interests, mental health interests. So I was visiting quite a number of Australian personnel in their workspace on a daily basis, providing them the work of what a psychologist would be doing.
I just want to turn to one more aspect of your experiences in Kabul. If the operator could go to page 13 and highlight 76 and 77. You here begin an account of what you described as the most experienced traumatic event that you have had, when not mentioning any names, as you know. But my intention is to ask you about the impact of all of this, of these terrible events, on you. But before I ask, is there something that you would wish also to say about the events themselves? You don't have to, but if there is, I want to give you the chance.
Just briefly, there was an Australian soldier who was previously on death row in Kabul, which is quite close to where I was located. I've been following his case since he was imprisoned. His case was reduced to a life sentence. And I consulted with my CO on base, whether there was any scope to address his medical needs coming onto a bitterly cold winter, cognizant of the fact that he was in one of the worst prisons in the world. She cautioned me rightly and said that it could embarrass the Defence Force, embarrass Australia, if we were seen to be looking after an Australian prisoner in Afghanistan prison. So she gave me the contact details of someone from the Australian Embassy to at least inquire through them of his welfare. They inappropriately gave my insecure Roshan or cellphone number to this prisoner. And I received a random call from him one evening, and he was quite insistent that I not hang up, that he told me he had intel surrounding the origin of the rocket attacks we were receiving, which were originating from his prison. It put me in quite an impossible position. I mean, I knew that we were trained pre-deployment to be mindful of sensitive conversations on insecure phone lines, and, you know, my gut instinct was to hang up. But, I mean, he was telling me that the rocket attacks at our base was more or less receiving, for which we were not medically capable of responding to. He was telling me that we could potentially stop those rocket attacks if I listened to his intel. He also made mention in that conversation, I mean, I took the opportunity to inquire for his welfare as well. But he made mention that a missionary family had been visiting him for the previous years, but had ceased due to the inherent dangers involved in the previous four months. He mentioned them by name.
The tragic events, do you wish to make any comment on the impact that they have had on you? Obviously, they're not in isolation, but is there anything that you wish to say about the impact on you personally over the years?
Are you talking about psychological impact or...?
In particular, there may be other impacts that you wish to mention, but that's...
Well, I mean, that particular family was subsequently killed by the Taliban. I mean, I guess there was a moral injury on my behalf that had I hung up that phone call, that they might not be dead. I mean, he was in a prison with foreseeable opportunity for the phone that he was using in a prison full of Taliban prisoners to have been tapped in some way. But, I mean, I blamed myself for their deaths, the moment that I received their bodies into, on base. Yeah, I don't think you can walk, if you're a compassionate human being, I don't think you can walk away from that without some damage psychologically.
Before we leave Afghanistan itself, I do want to turn to the circumstances of your return to Australia. But before we do that, I'm going to ask the operator to bring up a couple of different documents that are not your statement. The first one is DMA quadruple zero triple O one O one nine five. If we look at that heading here, are you able to recognise what this document is? And can you tell us?
The American equivalent of a performance appraisal report conducted by the doctors I was working for, American doctors I was working for.
We see halfway down this first page, part three, assessment. And there's the beginning of a list of 13 different criteria. Conveniently, if we go over the page numbered one to 12, 12 has two components to it. And in every single one, you got the highest grading from the American assessor. Did you also, however, have an Australian grading as well?
Correct.
I'll just get the operator to bring up the document DMA quadruple zero triple O one O one nine nine. This is the Army Officer Appraisal, sorry, Performance Appraisal Report for you. If we go over to page two, we see that part three of the document is headed Assessing Officer Report. And there's a series of different subtopics. Just to give an indication, there's leadership, job competence, strategic perspective, and others. And respectively, for those three, you were rated as above worn rank, above worn rank, above worn rank. I think it's clear what that means. You were ranked captain, were you not?
Correct.
And on the next page, there's a series of more, sorry, more criteria. They either get the rating highly effective or above worn rank. What I, in that context, just want to go over to the next page, which is O two O two. And if we could just highlight part three B, Assessing Officer Report at the top. Up until, thank you, operator, perfect. There is a section here for opportunities for development or improvement. And it says that Captain Mealy will benefit from expanding on his emergency skills with further emergency training. What comment in agreement or disagreement do you have with that suggestion that that would be an area for development?
This was a report generated from an Australian senior officer on base in Kabul. And it took some time for them to realise the stresses that I had and the cases that I was receiving. And once they finally realised the lack of resources we had and the skills that I needed, they were in full support of sending forward a medical team and also in full support of my upskilling in an emergency capacity.
And finally, for this document, while we have it, I'll get the operator to go to O two O three, the next page. There's a section, part six, Assessing Officer Annual Report. And here you are said to be strongly recommended for promotion and highly suitable for a number of different types of duties, with the statement, emergency physician training should be encouraged. Firstly, were you promoted?
No, I was discharged.
Did you take steps to try and secure emergency physician training?
I did, yes.
We might turn to that topic. It's in the statement, if we could go back to Dr. Mealy's statement. And let us go to page 14 and 15. And this can be technically awkward, but I think we'll try and display in larger font 92 to 94, just to introduce this subject. And we, thank you, operator. You did make an application for emergency training medicine at a teaching hospital, which we didn't name. Could you just tell us what programme you were applying to get into, whether it was a competition of some kind, and what was the result of your application?
It's very competitive to apply for training positions in Australia, particularly in a major teaching hospital. This was for a senior resident medical officer role in emergency department at this hospital. We're in lieu of potential, so it was a one-year contract, in lieu of potential transferring to registrar role, emergency registrar role.
I may have missed hearing it, but you were among 600 applicants and you were successful, you were offered a position in this hospital. If we could focus on page 15 of the statement, particularly paragraphs 95 to 98. Having made your application and having been offered a position, did the hospital communicate to you that you needed to accept the offer by a deadline?
I had 28 days to sign the contract.
And you were, to summarise what's in the statement, you contacted your chain of command daily, attempting to get approval to do this. You signed, according to the statement, at 96, you signed and attempted to send a contract to the hospital, but the email bounced back and you then didn't try again and did not enter into a contract. Let's cut to the chase. In the end, did you do the training? Did you get into the course?
By the time I was discharged from the Defence Force, nine months later, there was still two months or three months left of the original contract at this hospital. And so I was given the opportunity to accept that, two months of that contract, yeah.
When was that? Did, sorry, did you, did you take the training?
Yes, 2015. It was two months' work, yeah.
2015. Now, this offer came in late 2014, is that right? If we, operator, can go over to page 16 and expand paragraph 104. You tell us here that the ADF gave the spot that you had won, I'm sorry, the hospital gave the spot to another ADF doctor. Is that what happened to the spot that you had won?
That's correct. He did not take that role for the full year. I mean, he told emergency staff that he didn't even want that training opportunity. He left nine months into his, or my contract.
I'm just asking, I don't know. Is that what then gave you the opportunity to do a couple of months of this at the end of the year?
And also, I was not working for Defence anymore, yes.
Right, you'd left Defence by then. And did either of you end up getting a qualification as a result of the training, of which he did most and you did some?
No, neither of us did, no. I mean, two months was insufficient for, and I was just in a heightened state of anxiety that I wasn't able to really give it my full go.
All right. Well, I want to turn to the repercussions of your attempt to get into this course. If we highlight paragraphs 102 and 103 on the same page, you speak of a phone call, just in the first line. It was from the day of that phone call, I was hit with a cascade of trauma. Is that a reference to a phone call between your chain of command and the hospital?
Yes, my chain of command, I mean, with my pressured phone calls for my chain of command to make a decision about whether I could sign the contract towards the end of that 28-day grace period, my chain of command contacted the hospital to ask for an extension on that contract period. Because they told me they didn't, the Defence Force didn't have any precedent to allow this kind of... Because they told me they didn't, the Defence Force didn't have any precedent to allow this kind of, um, training arrangements to take place. Even though someone had her ambitions entirely met, as revealed in the orientation. This phone call, um, took place between a low-level staffer of the hospital and, um, my chain of command. And I knew this particular staffer of the hospital, I'd, I'd worked at this hospital before. Lovely lady. Um, she thought she was doing me a favour by pressuring Defence Force into releasing me. By intimating to my chain of command that they assumed I was definitely coming. Which was a lie. Um, and it put me in a position to have my integrity questioned. I mean, I admit that I did, uh, set, attempt to sign a contract. The advice I was being given in, in Kabul was do now, seek permission later. I didn't think it was such a big deal considering others had had their aspirations met, um, with training. I was in a war zone that required an emergency skill set that I didn't have. I wanted to ensure that if I was ever put in this position again, that I would have, um, a high level of skill set. I, I think that in a whole scheme of things, I, I, I did the right thing from a clinical perspective. To recognise my skill deficit and then try to upskill. In any case, that phone call, um, was the start point to unbelievable, um, amounts of retaliation. From my chain of command towards me and, and lack of support.
I'll come to that in a moment. I just want to, uh, get the details of the advice you got was to do now, seek permission later, something to that effect. I'm not asking for any individual or rank or role or anything like that. But, uh, was the person who gave you that advice a person within the ADF? Or within the American military or perhaps not in any organisation at all? Just at the organisational level, who gave you that advice?
An officer in the ADF.
Now, as, as it's reported here at one O three, just two days before Christmas. You received a communication demanding your immediate return to Australia to face charges. Leading to the need to cancel your Christmas plans. You, you had leave organised and you had arrangements to meet up with your family, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Did you in fact, um, go immediately to Australia?
Sorry, say again?
Did you in fact go immediately to Australia as that communication appeared to require? Or was there a change of requirement?
Um, my bags were packed, ready to go, um, the day before Christmas, um, to go face my jail term. But then it became glaringly evident that, um, my absence would leave a major hole in the provision of healthcare. For, um, Australian forces on base, and it's quite a number of them. So I was asked then to remain in base for another month. To start preparing for all of the health personnel that I'd been asking for since September. Which I did.
Now, you mentioned that you were packed, you had your bags packed and you were ready to go and face your jail term. Let's be, just for clarity, you never did have a jail term, is that right?
No, but I mean, I was told, um, when I was reprimanded for, um, allegedly entering into this, um, contract, which I didn't do. That it was a prejudi, the charge would be prejudicial, uh, conduct. That it would carry, it could forcibly carry a jail term. But no, I did not.
So before, before you packed your bags, you'd already been told by someone in the chain of command. That you had embarrassed the ADF, which could lead to a jail term, is that?
Correct. My C I R E in Australia.
Yes, in Australia, did you say? All right. Well, we won't name that person. Now, just move to the next little topic. If we look at paragraph one hundred and five on this statement. We can see, as you've just said, that there was a placing on hold of your immediate return to Australia. What does that say about the necessity or otherwise of recalling you immediately? So you, do you have any insights on that? You were, first they said you had to return immediately, then they said you didn't. Does that give you any insight into whether it was really necessary in the first place to make it an immediate return?
Well, of, of course, the, the immediacy was only relevant, um, if they didn't need me in that role. I mean, it, it became irrelevant when they realised I was needed.
All right. Um, I'll just ask the operator to proceed to the next page, page seventeen. And if it's possible to highlight paragraphs one hundred and seven through to one hundred and ten, which runs over the page. When did you actually get to Australia after your recall?
I believe it was March, February, March.
And just to complete the chronology, you went from Afghanistan to the UAE and did some work there first at, at the requirement of the ADF, is that right?
Correct. On my way home to Australia, I was, um, asked, or told I, I had to stay in UAE. To fill a medical gap until another doctor could be found. And I might add, this whole time I was still thinking I'm going to jail. I mean, this took, you know, four or five months before I knew what my charge was and what the potential punishment was going to be.
Yes. Now, coming to that, uh, your statement says that it wasn't until March twenty fifteen that you were told what the charge would be. Namely disobeying a lawful command by way of signing the contract with the hospital. And the punishment was a verbal but official reprimand. Would you just tell us how significant for you that verbal reprimand was? Put it in context so that we can evaluate whether that was a lenient or, or not lenient response from your point of view.
I, I found that extremely excessive. I mean, I did nothing wrong. Absolutely nothing wrong. My, my mind was not working at this stage. My medical career was over. My medical, my military career was over. I had no idea whether I was ever going to be able to work again. I needed a legal system within Defence Force that was on my side. That could forensically isolate the facts, like the Ombudsman did, like you're doing. That was not forthcoming and, and yes, it was extremely excessive. I needed, I needed someone with wisdom to step in at this point and to end this nightmare.
All right. Let me get a little bit of context, chronological structure here. I'll ask the operator to highlight or expand, uh, one, paragraphs one hundred and eleven through to one hundred and nineteen. Runs over two pages, so it might be challenging. At one hundred and eleven, you say that from this point on, the ADF took steps to discharge me. And at one hundred and nineteen, the ultimate result, you were discharged in about September twenty fifteen. So that's the chronological structure. Firstly, you, you just began on this, but did you want to say anything more about your reflections on the appropriateness of discharging you? And the process that led to that decision?
I mean, I needed to get out. There was this cult of mediocrity. And I was being harmed. And every time, every time I turned around, I was being seriously harmed. But the intention to send me into Afghanistan was to reinvigorate my desire to be in defence. Was a lifelong ambition for me to join the Defence Force, to follow in my dad's footsteps. I envisaged before signing up a lifelong career in the Defence Force. And that, that deployment certainly did reinvigorate the, um, military ambition. As evidenced by my performance appraisal reports, I was well-suited to remain in the Defence Force.
Could I ask you, through that process that begins with a, an order for immediate return. Through to the time when you were discharged from the ADF. What legal, social, psychological and other supports were given to you? To help you navigate the process effectively and survive the process in good health?
Starting from a legal perspective, I approached a legal officer on base. Who informed me that the Defence Force lawyers were not there to represent individual members, they were there to represent defence. They gave me a contact details of a civilian barrister, I believe he might have been a reservist. And I made an appointment with him and he told me that, um, I needed someone with a, a legal, um, a lawyer who specialised in military law. So that was the end of my legal assistance. I, I didn't get any. The actual court process for, um, my charge being heard consisted in a major, I believe she had, um, a logistics, um, background. She was the judge. Um, I had my mate, who was an infantry junior captain, as my lawyer. And the lawyer representing defence was a physiotherapist. Uh, everyone was just reading their script.
So you said that the lawyer for defence was a physiotherapist?
There were no lawyers present. This is a military court.
Right, so it wasn't a lawyer, it was a person in the role?
I, I still don't understand the relevance of a military, um, court proceeding with no lawyers present. I think it was a token, um, proceeding towards a punitive end that everyone knew was going to happen anyway. But, so from a legal perspective, there was no legal support. From a psychological perspective, um, I approached, I mean, I asked for a psychologist when I was in Afghanistan. And a psychologist was brought forward into Kabul, um, based upon the members that I discussed earlier, who were acutely suicidal. He made some attempts to meet with them. I, I made an appointment to see him myself and I was brushed off the whole week and then he left. When I came home, I, I, I was looked after really well by a civilian G P on base, who was highly respected. Um, who took me under his wing and, and had me sitting in office next to him. And I was running on my patients by him, um, in the interests of patient safety, really trying hard to, um, keep me afloat. I, I, under his advice, I went to see a psychologist on base. I, I don't remember why it was that I stopped seeing the psychologist, I ended up seeing a civilian psychologist. But the, from a psychological perspective, there was no point in undergoing any kind of psychological, um, intervention. Because the trauma I was experiencing was still happening. I thought I was going to go to jail. I thought that, um, I was in trouble with this big military organisation. I needed that to end. I needed justice, not a psychologist. But I, I did have the provision of psychological care through, um, that psychologist. Until I left base in, left Townsville. From a social perspective.
Base was the base in Kabul?
I'm sorry, say again?
You said, I think you said until I left base.
I left, uh, Laverick Barrett Base in Townsville. From a social perspective, I mean, prior to, um, going to Afghanistan. I had a great friendship base of other junior officers. After Afghanistan, I was, um, I withdrew to my, um, base, um, accommodation and stayed there. I didn't go out, I didn't, um, that sort of.
I want to turn now to the dealings that you had in respect of the ADF. After you separated from them in the second half of twenty fifteen. If the operator could go to page twenty of the statement. And there are paragraphs one twenty-five through to one twenty-seven. Begin a discussion of two of those processes. If you look at one twenty-five, you say you commenced legal proceedings against the ADF. Is that a reference, not to a court case, but to a, a claim that you made under an administrative scheme called compensation for detriment caused by defective administration? Or C D D A?
I, I started, I mean, I want to be clear here, I, I didn't, my wording wasn't thoroughly accurate here. I never commenced any legal proceedings. I, I went through the Ombudsman, which was the Defence Forces, um, chosen mechanisms of complaint. I, I did not want to create any embarrassment to the Defence Force. So I went through, I put in my original complaint through the Ombudsman on the seventeenth of February, which is, um, prior to returning to Australia from Kabul.
So that's just, first of the chronology. You made a complaint to the Ombudsman, as you just said, in February twenty fifteen. That process in, in steps that we will mention shortly, went through into twenty sixteen. And in large measure, you got some vindication. And at the end of the process, your attention was drawn to this, by the Ombudsman, to the C D D A scheme. And you then made a claim under that scheme. Is that the correct chronology?
Correct. It took a year to process through to the Ombudsman's final statement. I was advised in the statement itself from the Ombudsman to, um, apply to the C D D A scheme, um, which I did. And I, that took, I think, two years, that process.
Let me just break up the chronology within this first segment. The Ombudsman, uh, initially wrote to you in August twenty fifteen. And this is at one hundred and twenty-seven, to indicate that, um, some matters had not received a resolution. Others couldn't be investigated because of jurisdiction. And so, and the documents speak for themselves, but then you wrote back to the Ombudsman, did you not? And drew attention to matters that they should take into account, leading to a reopening of their inquiry and a new outcome in twenty sixteen. Is that correct? Had you heard of the scheme for, what I'll call a C D D A scheme, before the Ombudsman told you about it?
Right.
I'll ask the operator if we can go to page twenty-six of the statement. Here at paragraphs one hundred and sixty-two to one sixty-five, you discuss the impact of the, of aspects of the process. Ultimately, as you say, at one sixty-two, you settled your claims under the C D D A scheme. Firstly, uh, at just a detail, at one sixty-three, you say that the contents of the submission displayed no remorse or empathy. That submission was, was it not, a reference to a so-called position paper? That was prepared on behalf of the ADF for the purposes of a mediation of your claims? That, that's what you're referring to?
That's correct.
All right. Um, you have described here in brief the, the impact on you of the adversarial nature. Are there any additional matters you wanted to say about the impact on you of the process?
At this point, it was three years since the original complaint to the Defence Ombudsman. In context, um, in the months prior to reaching that conciliatory, um, meeting with Defence Forces external lawyers. I had gone to my local member and said, I need this to end. I need to move on from this three-year legal, at that stage, two-and-a-half-year legal process. That was suspending me in, um, the trauma of it all. My local member contacted the Defence Minister at the time, the Honourable Maurice Payne. She stepped in and, um, I believe intervened to the extent that I was given this conciliatory meeting with Defence Force. An officer from the Chief of Staff's, um, office, as well as, um, Defence's external lawyers present.
I'll ask the operator to go to page nineteen of the statement. And in particular to expand paragraphs one hundred and twenty-one to one hundred and twenty-three. The upshot of the C D D A claim, um, in spite of the problem, problems that it had. Was that there was an award of compensation and an apology to you, at least in a formal sense. We don't need to go into the detail. You do say here, you've considered that apology was insincere for various reasons. But I just want to lead from that base and to get some explanation of what your statement then says. The, the apology was insincere, not simply for the terrible things that were said about you in the position paper that I've just mentioned. And about your family and so on. But you say this, it was also insincere because of the fact that my military and medical careers were over. And the services I would receive by the Department of Veterans Affairs consisted in a year-long process to determine. That the department would only fund and train me into a role of medical reception. me into a role of medical receptionist. I'm just wondering whether you could explain what this DVA-related process was and how it could reach the point that they're offering, in effect, a career path to you as a medical receptionist when you were a qualified practitioner?
The apology letter from the Defence Force recommended that I make use of the Department of Veterans Affairs services, one of which was, I mean, I needed a job, I might not have been able to work as a doctor at that stage on my own volition, I'd self-notified to my registration authority that I wasn't able to work, but I needed to work. The Department of Veterans Affairs referred me to one of their occupational specialists to a year-long process, working with me, doing psychometric evaluations and skills assessments to work out what I would be good at, and the roles that they were giving me were to become a medical receptionist.
I'll come back to some aspects of that in a moment. I wonder whether you'd be in a position to share with us any views you have, not just of the impact on the proceedings for you personally, but whether you feel in a position to make a broader comment about whether such proceedings of this nature are likely to have a good or a bad impact for the typical veteran, given that you will have met a few veterans in your time, including serving members where applicable?
I'm a doctor, I think I'm a fairly smart guy. If I could exit all of this and not find a way to explain five years of just absolute brutality and destroying, life absolutely destroyed, if I couldn't find a reason to explain that all and if suicide was an option for me, then I really worry for, and worried for, the average digger who might not have been able to understand it either.
The position paper that I mentioned before, we're not asking for any names, even of law firms, but it was written by a major law firm, acting on behalf of defence in that mediation process. Who, if anybody, was acting for you?
I had a really good lawyer at that stage, who helped me through the last, I believe, six months of that three-year process to get me, I mean, at this stage, obviously, I agree that I was not able to articulate any of the issues with fluency. It made it very hard to approximate a lawyer or anyone. He was very patient with me and helped me at that point.
All right. You'll see it, paragraph 122, which is on screen, that you say that all the events described had taken a toll on my health. You make a reference to the Australian Health Practitioner Regulation Agency. The details are in your statement, but is there anything that you would wish to say today orally about the impact on your health, about dealings with APRA? You don't have to, but if you want to, I want to give you that opportunity.
I made the original self-notification when I got back from Afghanistan, which is, you know, what we're supposed to do as clinicians, to alert our registration authority if we have any health aspects that might impact upon patient safety. And I subsequently referred myself again later on down the track in the course of the proceedings of this dispute with defence. The process of self-notification is deeply humiliating as it is, and I personally believe that the bureaucracies associated with regulation bodies and registration authorities at times forgets that they're dealing with vulnerable people who haven't done anything wrong and have difficulties sometimes separating a self-notification from a complaint from the public, treating both in the same manner.
At 123, you mention, in effect, a bit of advocacy that you were doing for another veteran who was in a vulnerable position at the time. Firstly, you have never been, if I could call it this, a capital A advocate, one of those many people who attempt to support veterans when they're making a claim for compensation to the DVA. We've heard a lot about those noble people who often on a voluntary basis are advocates for veterans in quite a formal sense. You've never been one of those advocates, correct?
Correct.
But you have advocated for a number of veterans, in effect, incidentally to the work that you've been doing, is that right?
Correct. And I think the word advocate is used quite fluidly in the defence and veteran space, as you rightly pointed out. An advocate in the veteran space is someone who helps fill out, someone who helps another veteran fill out forms, claim forms. But the advocacy that I saw and see as desperately needed is someone with military context. To stand up in a hypocritical sense for defence members and veterans who are having similar experience in their excursion through military, veteran, civilian, healthcare and welfare services, where those services are harming them. And so I checked myself into a PTSD hospital, twice in fact, and on this particular occasion, another patient had been homeless most of his life. He had put in an application through the Department of Veterans Affairs and it was rejected. And he was, he'd gone through the Veterans Review Board, applicant body, and had been rejected with them too, and it was about to face tribunal. I mean, he just wanted assistance at home and, you know, once he was discharged. And how harmful it is to navigate through processes that are adversarial and cruel. I asked a nurse at the nurse's station if I could use their printer to print out the letter, and I used my, which I did do, I used my doctor title in that letter to give, to elevate his case, and I subsequently used my name and my title many other times in my version of hypocritical advocacy numerous times after that. And the response from the nurse in the hospital was that it was uninsightful for me to be putting on a doctor's hat when I was a patient. And the clinical director of nursing subsequently tapped out a complaint to APRA, and they formed the view that it was uninsightful for me to write this letter. Arguably, I was in a psych ward where I was entitled to act in a manner that was considered to be psychologically impaired without having my privacy violated and confidentiality violated and having more punitive systems jump in to completely erode any future trust whatsoever that I would ever have again in any clinical psychologist or healthcare team.
Just to put that in context, you yourself, correct me if I'm wrong, but you yourself had self-notified to the relevant regulatory authority that you were struggling, I know that's not a technical term, correct?
Yeah, in excruciating detail of what I'm...
And I suggest to you that it's a very responsible, even if, you may have called it, I won't try and remember what you said, even if, I think you said something about it, but it was a difficult thing to do, but you did it, correct?
Correct.
You were in this PTSD ward, firstly, it was a ward for veterans, was it not?
Ninety percent of the patients were veterans.
Thank you. And had you checked yourself in, were you a voluntary patient?
Yes, with the referral from my GP.
And the point you were making, correct me if I'm wrong, but were you making the point a moment ago, that having checked yourself in for psychological support in that ward, you should not have had what you did in that ward, even if it was a matter of generosity to someone else used against you? I'll ask the operator to go to page 114 of your statement. Dr Mealy, as you know, I think we've tried to progress chronologically, and I want to come to a final topic of the chronology, part one of this examination, which is into your own experiences before we turn to your research efforts. In your statement, you have, on various pages, you've discussed the road to this Royal Commission, and you've reflected upon some of the milestones along the way, including the DART programme run by Major General Robert Smith, media coverage of this issue, the Save Our Heroes Summit, which you attended, I believe, and a meeting in the Treasurer's Office, which was briefly attended by the former Prime Minister and a number of other people. I'm not saying that's a comprehensive summary, but it just gives a bit of a framework, the details are in your statement. The upshot in brief was that there was, is this fair to say, competing views about whether or not a Royal Commission should be convened into the subject of defence and veteran suicide? Would you agree that there was that controversy?
Correct.
And the upshot of some of the controversial discussions and deliberations was initially, at least, a decision to establish the Office of National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention, correct?
May I permit you to expand on this at all? Is it...
We are going to give you that opportunity, but if I could just lay the groundwork...
That's correct.
And correct me if you don't agree with my summary, but there was, there were calls for a Royal Commission, before this Royal Commission was called, an alternative was set up, correct?
Correct.
So you wanted to elaborate, I'll just pause now to give you the opportunity to make the point you wanted, and then I'll ask you some more questions.
The Royal Commission has been called for by families for 15 years, according to my research into newspaper articles from suicides in the early 2000s. In fact, I think it was 2002 was the first call for a Royal Commission. This has been a long time coming, contrasting against the nation's first Royal Commission, the very first federal Royal Commission, where the life of one soldier repatriating from the Bulwark War was called for in the moment when the events were occurring. In fact, the Royal Commission team met the disembarking ship, the SS Strayden Grange and the SS Norfolk, having, the Royal Commission was already formed at that stage before the ships in question had returned to dock. Jumping 120 years later, it's taken a good two decades for this Royal Commission to be enacted. A lot of families, a lot of us had been fighting for this Royal Commission for a very long time. And it became evident in an email that was sent to me on the 20th of December in 2019, that a group of mostly civilians in quite significant positions of power had secretly met with the Royal, I say secretly because it wasn't tabled, it wasn't advertised, it wasn't in the media, they secretly met with the Treasurer of the country, a meeting to which the Prime Minister made a special backdoor appearance. The email, debriefing, the debriefing email was sent to me eight days after the event. And it was made clear in this email that everyone at the table gave their clear reasons against the Royal Commission.
Is this right, Dr Mealy? Firstly, you received an email indirectly or through a chain that recounted the contents of the discussions at the meeting you mentioned that involved the Treasurer and others, correct?
That's correct.
And the essential point that you make about it was that in lieu of having a Royal Commission, those present supported and the government ultimately agreed to two alternatives. One was to set up the Office of the National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention, and the other was to get government funding for a project that was considered to be of value to some of those people's organisations.
That's correct. I believe the nature of the email did not specify that they were there to promote an alternative to the Royal Commission by way of a national commission. However, in the months preceding that meeting, I was contacted by the organiser of that meeting, informing me that the Prime Minister was looking for a more positive, refocused commission to investigate veteran suicide. And I think that the proof, that the high-level advice that was given to the Prime Minister and the Treasurer, the evidence that that had towards the emergence of the National Commission was the announcement six weeks later of the National Commissioner into prevention of veteran suicide, one that would be more positively focused on the prevention of veteran suicide, one that would, according to the National Commissioner, not be implemented to even look at previous coroner's reports that stated death consequent to suicide.
Rightly or wrongly, is it fair to describe, I'll withdraw that, is it fair to describe the controversy about setting up a Royal Commission and setting up a National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention as leading to competing camps of opinion?
It created irrevocable division in a community that at that stage was all on the same side. We needed a definitive Royal Commission justice system to scrupulously analyse many of the things that were not just causing PTSD relating to, causing suicide relating to PTSD, yet the PTSD narrative was the only one that was being discussed at that stage, as my case has rightly pointed out. There are a lot of things that have happened in my own personal journey through Defence Force that could have forcibly led to suicide.
And is it fair to say that you were one of the advocates for a Royal Commission and at that time not supportive of the alternative?
Correct.
Now there is a Royal Commission, and I want to turn your focus to what might come after the Royal Commission, if you have any opinions to offer. Do you have a view as to whether or not there should be an ongoing or enduring public authority with power to oversee relevant agencies such as the ADF, the DVA, and maybe others, to monitor implementation of recommendations and to continue work on this important subject?
I mean, firstly, what is a national commission? What is it? I mean, why were they experimenting on one of the most traumatised demographics in the country with an untested commission? in the country with an untested commission? I really can't answer that question because no one really knows what a national commission is. I do believe that we need some change, we need something different, given the fact that we've had over thirty-seven reports, inquiries, commissions and recommendations, of which have mostly been shelved and forgotten. It worries me that at the conclusion of this Royal Commission, we will have even more recommendations that will be shelved and forgotten. So something has to give and there has to be a morality shift in the leadership of the country and the leadership of the Defence Force that starts understanding that their leadership failures have caused over one thousand six hundred deaths and countless lives ruined.
So you say something has to give. Would you rule out a body calculated to monitor whether recommendations are being implemented?
A body is needed for sure. I think that what is necessary urgently is an ethics committee that is comprised of academics, theologians, philosophers, doctors, lawyers, people from the veteran space, who give recommendations and advice to the Prime Minister, to the defence of the CDF, about matters that could foreseeably result in detriment to an individual and globally to veterans and Defence Force personnel. Whether that be giving advice about the ethics of war engagement, the ethics of sending SASR soldiers in the place of an infantry battalion and the consequences that that would likely result in, particularly if we send them twelve deployments in a row, the ethics of using soldiers in drug trials, in phase three drug trials. There is a need for an ethical institution that gives broad ranging advice to the leaders of this country and leaders of the Defence Force. In terms of legal support, we have an untenable situation right now of Defence Force members struggling to find a lawyer to deal with basic redress of grievance issues, of administrative and legal issues that happen in the time course of their employment with the Defence Force, not finding a lawyer and then having to sit before illegitimate or impotent legal systems where the government of the day, the CDF, the IGADF have top ranking lawyers representing them, with some of the most traumatised members of the country not having any legal representation whatsoever. So I mean, I think that a national commission might be handy, but I mean, they're going to have to rebrand the national commission, given the complete distrust in the National Commissioner, consequent to the meeting that took place prior to its announcement and derailed the Royal Commission in the process. I don't think we can call it a national commission.
Should there be a body with powers to investigate any future suicides or indeed any past ones, to learn lessons and/or a body that is authorised to conduct research into the issues affecting the wellbeing of veterans?
I want to be cautious in not overstepping what I'm able to answer here, but I draw your attention to the conclusions of the Royal Commissioner into the banking and financial sector, who claimed in his recommendations, stipulated that the legislation or its interpretation is not the problem, so there was no point in enacting more legislation or clarifying the law. Parallel to that, in the Defence Force space, we have the appropriate legislation, protocols and policies in place to support appropriate welfare and treatment of our Defence Force personnel and veterans. What is missing is leaders with morality and compassion and wisdom to uphold those policies, protocols and legislation and to step outside of them in a compassionate sense when needed to.
Commissioners, I indicated, or I hope I indicated, that there were to be two parts to Dr. Mealy's evidence, one based on the chronology of his own experiences and that the second part would focus on various matters into which he had conducted his own research. We're at the end of part one, completely in your hands, but if you felt it convenient, I would yield to you to ask any questions that you wanted to at this stage, or indeed Commonwealth, and I would be proposing to take the midway break when we've done that.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Mealy. I have a few questions. First of all, could you give me some indication? I think you spoke about your sense that from a medical perspective, you had obviously some training and experience, but you didn't feel necessarily completely adequately medically equipped to do what you were facing when you were deployed. But can you give me a sense of what psychological preparation you had and what kind of moral or ethical preparation you may have had for being placed in the circumstances that you were?
Commissioner Brown, I'm assuming that there would have been pre-deployment preparation in those roles, I honestly can't remember, so I'm not going to comment if that's okay.
Okay, no, that's fine, thank you. Just again, as a, I guess to clarify in my own mind, you indicated your aspiration was to be an emergency physician. And I can see the relevance of that, obviously, to someone who also had an aspiration for a lifelong career in the ATF. But I guess there's also a potential dissonance in my mind if you're going to be a full-time member of the ATF but a practising emergency physician. If you're not in a war zone, to maintain your skills there would have meant you needed to be doing emergency work regularly. How did you actually envisage that working?
Well firstly, the precedent had already been set for someone who was given ICU training, so I would assume that the Defence Forces made arrangements for her to be a full-time member, completing her five years of ROZO. At that stage, we were still engaged in a fourteen-year war at that stage in Afghanistan. We had no idea where, the time course of that finishing. It was looking like we were going to be there for a lot longer. But I labour on the point that the advice that I was given was given two separate occasions in 2002 and around 2006. This was ten years later, twelve years later, that the enactment of that advice that was given all those years ago was, had then become relevant. Because of that initial advice, I'd spent Christmas holiday breaks enthusiastically working in trauma and emergency departments. In fact, I was invited by the Director of Trauma at a hospital in Melbourne, a major hospital in Melbourne, to accompany him and his trauma team to help open up a trauma hospital in Sri Lanka, which I attended. I mean, I was very enthusiastic about my career in the Army and as an emergency physician or trauma surgeon, and I thought that that would be supported all the way through. But in terms of what I thought that that would look like, it's very hard to comment on that without knowing at that stage what our commitment to that war would have been moving forward.
Sure. And you described, if I can move on then, to the court martial process. I think that's what you were describing, is that an accurate representation?
I don't know, Commissioner Brown, it was a legal proceeding, I don't know if you could call it a court martial.
But you, well, for that legal proceeding, there was no lawyers?
Correct.
Involved?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
And from your understanding, was that the norm for that kind of proceeding? Or was your circumstance somehow different to the norm?
They were reading scripts, Commissioner Brown, so I'm assuming it was the norm.
Right, okay. And you said that after returning from Afghanistan, you didn't have legal support. You did have some psychological support, albeit that it ended and then you sought it, ended from defence and you sought it in the civilian area. You said you didn't really have any social support because you were withdrawing. Did you have support from your chain of command?
I did up until discharge and then moving forward from that, my OC, very supportive after defence, I was very fortunate. She attended the conciliatory meeting with me three years later.
Okay. And again, so that I can properly understand, you said the charge, when you were finally told, was disobeying a lawful command?
Correct.
Did I hear that correctly? What was the lawful command that you had disobeyed?
I was commanded to not sign a contract until given authorisation to do so, which by all technicality I did sign.
Were you actually given that command though?
I was.
You were?
Yes.
All right, thank you, just wanted to clarify that. And so the outcome of that legal process was what exactly?
Which legal, you're talking about the kangaroo court with the?
Well, the process whereby, whether it was a court martial or not, we're not sure, but that legal process where that charge was heard, can you just clarify for me what the actual outcome of that was?
The outcome was reprimand, a verbal reprimand, and to have permanently on my record a conviction of disobeying a lawful command. And I might add that the Minister Maurice Payne advised Brigadier Spalding to have that conviction removed. Brigadier Spalding then decided, advised me to initiate a redress of grievance to have that conviction removed, which I did, and it's still there to this day.
Okay. So your discharge from the Defence Force was not specifically initiated by that, as an outcome of that process?
I was being hastened out of Defence Force, Commissioner Brown. I was being treated like I was a misfit for the organisation.
But did they, sorry, just so that I'm really clear, so, but did the Defence Force initiate your discharge or did you initiate it because of those feelings?
I had five years remaining on my return service, so the Defence Force initiated that. I mean, I did as well, I mean, it was untenable for me to remain in this organisation, I think it was mutual.
Right. And was it a medical discharge then?
It was an administrative discharge, I believe.
Right, okay. And so, and again, just so that I'm really clear in understanding, so you then raised the matter with the Commonwealth Ombudsman at the beginning of 2015. In August 2015, you received a letter from them, which it was effectively them closing the matter?
They had, I believe so, and I think that they hadn't addressed some major components to my original complaint.
So that's when you rewrote and they reopened it?
Correct.
Okay. And then you said subsequently to all of that, you talked about the DVA process and you said it took twelve months. And I wasn't clear whether it was twelve months to actually undertake that skills assessment and the psychometric evaluation, or whether it took twelve months to get the consideration and that that process of skills assessment and psychometric evaluation was a shorter timeframe, I'm just trying to understand.
It took twelve months from that conciliatory meeting to the point at which it was concluded that I was best suited to become a medical receptionist and that takes into account times of letters being sent from the Department of Veterans to and forth, delays in getting information, delays in getting appointments with various personnel, delays in understanding the DVA system to work out what my next steps are and who my points of contact are.
So it was the whole process, not just the skills assessment?
Correct, the whole process.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then my last question is just again, to better understand the circumstances, you described this meeting between the Treasurer and civilians in power. Do you have any understanding why the Treasurer may have participated in such a meeting?
I mean, that's a very good question, Commissioner Brown. Why is the Treasurer or the Prime Minister needed in the opening of, I don't know what you want to call it, we can't call it that, healthcare initiatives? I don't know, I think it's excessive to, it violates the principle of subsidiarity to have highest level of government to open healthcare and welfare services.
Thank you, Dr. Mealy.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Thanks, Dr. Mealy, for your evidence. I want to clarify one thing. You say that your conviction remains on the record. Did you get a response to your redress of grievance application?
Commissioner Douglas, I wasn't actually informed what the process of redress of grievance was. I wrote an email to Brigadier Spalding, which I don't believe I received a response from.
And was he at the IGADF?
I'm sorry?
Was he at the IGADF?
She, I think it is, Brigadier Spalding. I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
So you're not sure whether you actually engaged in the process of logging a redress?
I wasn't informed of the process and who the points of contact are or what address of grievance entailed.
Thanks. Having clarified that to some extent, I'm more interested in what you said about an ethics committee. Do you relate those ethical issues particularly to the problems of suicidality in the ATF and amongst reserves?
Absolutely. I believe that when we have leaders making hasty or ill-advised decisions at a high level, it will always affect the most disempowered members of any organisation, particularly of a Defence Force. And so having ethical advice at that level, I think is fundamentally needed. I'm not sure if that answers your question though.
It does, yes. Assume that, as we've already telegraphed, we want to make a recommendation that there be a permanent body to follow us. Do you have any suggestions about how its structure should reflect those sorts of ethical issues?
And I think an ethical body as a standalone remedy is not appropriate. I mean, something that addresses the legal aspects for Defence Force members and veterans is fundamentally needed too, and spills over into the ex-service organisation space as well. When you consider that the Defence Force of Australia essentially has outsourced a lot of its corporate responsibility to the Department of Veterans Affairs. Department of Veterans Affairs essentially outsources a lot of its corporate responsibility and accountability towards contracted ex-service organisations. This has created a wild, wild west of healthcare and welfare services where there doesn't appear to be anyone regulating those charitable organisations or government-funded institutions, to the extent where we have a number of them who are government-funded acting in a partisan way, loyal to the source of the government funding, as evidenced by the number of ex-service organisations who directly oppose this Royal Commission. Even though the chief ex-service organisation, the RSL, is constituted in section four J of its objects of its constitution to remain non-partisan and non-sectarian, something is needed to oversee the ex-service organisation space to ensure that they have appropriate constitutions in place, uniform constitutions and professional code of conduct, that they are appropriately skilled and upskilled and in line with key performance indicators that have a measurable approach to the services that they purport to or are providing.
Did you have any earlier exposure to the Commonwealth's repatriation system of hospitals? Or was your medical career completely after that?
I think that was before my time.
Thanks.
Thank you for your evidence thus far, Dr. Mealy. Just a couple of quick questions. The compensation of detriment caused by defective administration, CDDA scheme, as Mr. Singleton called it, it seems to be quite a significant process, obviously. You mentioned that you did not receive any information about it, you were essentially told for the first time by the Ombudsman's Office?
Correct.
Are you aware of any promulgation of information about that scheme in the serving members, among the serving members?
Could you rephrase the question, sir?
Was it ever made known or advertised, you know, in somewhere within the military? Are you aware of, is it up on the wall? Are you aware of, is it up on the walls in the barracks or?
No, it wasn't. I mean, it didn't appear to be resolving the main issues that I wanted to have addressed anyway. They were only able to provide for me a sum of money that would compensate me for money lost from the process of detrimental administration in the Defence Force. It didn't take into account psychological damage, lifelong career loss, et cetera, et cetera. So, but no, I did not know about the CDA scheme prior.
Thank you. You've raised a large number of issues that have great interest to the Commission, and thank you for that, but just two very quick issues. One in relation to the environment of ex-service organisations. You may or may not be aware, and simply to make you and the public aware, we are very much focused on that issue and the harmonisation of the ex-service organisations, if you like. We are in discussions and we've been to two forums where the largest group possible was gathered that we would discuss, we could discuss all these issues about with them. And the other issue was obviously in relation to what, if any, entity may succeed this Royal Commission. Again, we're very much focused on that. We hope to publish a paper a bit later this year with some discussion points and then get some feedback from all the stakeholders before we decide what we're going to say to government, obviously, at the end of that. But thank you again for your evidence, it's very, very valuable for us. And we know it's not easy having to relive some of these experiences, but it's been enormously helpful thus far, and I know we're not finished yet. Mr Singleton, is this a convenient time to adjourn for morning study?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll adjourn briefly then.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will now adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Mr Singleton.
Commissioners, as I said this morning, part two of this examination focuses on a number of topics relevant to your terms of reference into which this witness has inquired. And whilst he doesn't claim to be an expert on them, he does bring the perspective of a medical practitioner who served in the Army to give us, and is in a position to draw our attention to these issues as ones that relevant authorities might pursue in future. The details of his conclusions and his researches are actually in the statement, but we would briefly introduce them orally in fairly brief terms. Might the operator bring up page 31 of Dr Mealy's statement? At the bottom of the page and running on to the next, in pages, sorry, paragraphs 193 to 197, Doctor, you raise a couple of issues, including the proper use of terminology and the need to recognise that external factors can weigh upon a person's freedom of decision-making and agency, and that that's relevant to whether or not this label suicide is applicable. And you refer to Brody's Law as an illustration of social policy at the moment. Are there any matters on that topic that you wanted just to briefly elaborate today?
Thanks, counsel. I would like to briefly say that the word suicide is equivocal in many cases, when you consider that a moral definition of suicide or a legal one takes into account that consenting freedom needs to be imbibed into that definition. A consenting freedom which can arguably be fundamentally blurred when there are external factors influencing that suicide. And I think we learned that from Brody's Law, an amendment to the Victorian Crimes Act of 1958, which suggested in the emerging legislation that stalking or bullying can be taken into account in defining a suicide consequence, that stalking and bullying, with the equivalent of manslaughter charge. How this, I believe, is relevant in the Defence Force setting is that veterans and Defence Force personnel, as has been evidenced before the Royal Commission over the last 18 months, their suicides, I believe, are quite often not with pure consenting freedom. And this has a tendency to create problems when a coroner's report states that the death was cause of death suicide, as though that is the conclusion, complete story and conclusion drawn, when in reality, the suicide is just the checkmate at end state. I believe that death by suicide can be defined as suicide when can, it can't be defined as suicide when consenting freedom and agency is removed, especially when the switching of the agency in respect of a death by suicide from the deceased to a separate individual renders the term suicide equivocal. I raised the point because a coroner's report of cause of death by suicide, investigations and a forensic analysis of those suicides shouldn't stop there. We do need to take into account the narrative of what led up to that suicide, to investigate the full book of suicide and all the people and institutions and organisations that were involved in those deaths.
The next topic you introduce in your statement is, given the label multi-generational trauma, and you refer to epigenetics, I'll just ask the operator to bring up a part of what you say at page 33, namely paragraphs 204 to 208. While that's being done, you are actually a fifth-generation ADF member, correct? And your father was a Colonel, and you've mentioned some of his experiences. So if you could just introduce this topic, just a brief explanation of what the topic is and why it might be worthy of examination, and if, to the extent you wish, by all means, refer to your own experiences or your families.
I guess my experience of being of multi-generational military background is not uncommon in the defenceful space. There are a lot of military families, established military families, with multiple generations of service. I think that that creates a certain, when you take into account the observation and the genetic experience of multi-generation, intergenerational trauma, it's to be expected that those who have that generationally inherited trauma will at times exhibit traumatised behaviour when things go wrong. And I think it's very important for Defence Force leaders to interpret any aberrant behaviour of their soldiers, sailors and aircrew through a lens of multi-generational trauma, as opposed to bringing the book out and charging a soldier with a charge of prejudicial conduct for a suicide attempt, for example. My father was infantry Colonel of 37 years. He was in Vietnam for two years, and he got shot in the back in Malaya during the Malayan Emergency, quite significant psychological and physical trauma throughout his service. In Vietnam, one of his soldiers was quite significantly injured by shrapnel fire. And Dad had a moral injury surrounding that and blamed himself. And from a generational perspective, I inherited that grief and that regret and that trauma as well. And in fact, when my father died in my final year of medical school, having surgery repaired for that bullet-wound injury from the Malayan Campaign, his soldier who was injured and severely brain damaged from that shrapnel injury died that same week. I went to both funerals. And it struck me as strange at the time, and I fully understand why now, but I felt that guilt of this soldier's death. So I think there's a psychological inheritance of trauma, which is quite predominant in the Defence Force space. But there's also an emerging field of epigenetics, which is proving that the behaviours associated with trauma are at least partially inherited as well, prior to even conception. When one or both parents experiences massive trauma and there are methylation of certain genetic points upon the DNA of the child that are considered to be predeterminants of bringing a child into a traumatised world, preparing the child for a traumatised world. It's a field of medicine which is emerging, it's a very exciting one. But I think that, I'll refer to my submission for the...
Yeah, thank you. The next topic you referred to is the corpus striatum. Firstly, that's a part of the brain, is it?
Correct.
You refer to and summarise some points arising from research conducted by Dr Rachel Wurzmann. Was her research specific to veterans or applicable to the general population?
Broadly speaking, general population. We know that trauma has the effect of creating a hypertrophied amygdala, which sends the amygdala into overdrive of emotional fight-or-flight response when there's emotional triggers, reminding someone of the original trauma. The prefrontal cortex is supposed to kick in and relax a traumatised mind. And in trauma, in PTSD, we know that there is a dampening of that response between the prefrontal cortex and the amygdala. And that disconnection between those two structures, the prefrontal cortex and the amygdala, that disconnection is directly proportional to the amount of disconnection that a human being experiences with the world around them in terms of connection to valuable sources of love, life, hope and purpose. The work of Dr Rachel Wurzmann revealed that the area in the brain known as the corpus striatum is implicated in compulsive spectrum disorders and addiction. She revealed that the corpus striatum has natural opioid and oxytocin receptors, implicating the corpus striatum in connection and in the warmth of social bonding. She also implicated the corpus striatum, as I mentioned, in addictions and compulsions. And my theory is that trauma has somehow a relationship with this corpus striatum, down-regulating the receptors of oxytocin and opioid receptors, and they're signalling pathways to the extent that trauma has an effect of increasing the expression of addictions and compulsive spectrum disorders. I think that this is, deserves further research. We know that people, from an anecdotal observational perspective, we know that traumatised demographics have a tendency to have problems with addictions and compulsive spectrum disorders. We know that from an observational perspective. We know that when someone receives compassion in that traumatised state, there is an explosion of neurobiochemicals such as dopamine, oxytocin, serotonin, endorphins, anamite. And I think we can conclude that those neurobiotransmitters and biochemicals heal a traumatised mind. We spend so much money on SSRIs and other medications that are psychotropic and assist with healing trauma and depression and anxiety and other mental illnesses. But I think that we do so increasingly at the expense of compassion as what should be the primary response to trauma, depression, anxiety and other mental illnesses, including addiction. And I think that that compassion is fundamentally missing from our society. In my submission, I draw attention to several Royal Commissions, notwithstanding the Royal Commission into the banking and financial sector, that revealed through a position paper arising from that Royal Commission, that women over the age of 65 are the fastest demographic, fastest emerging demographic of homelessness. Revealed in the Royal Commission into the aged care sector, that men over the age of 85 are the fastest-growing demographic of suicide. We've had multiple examples of Royal Commissions in recent years, including the Royal Commission into institutionalised responses to child sexual crime, that basically revealed wherever there are adults in charge of children, there's rampant abuse and child molestation. We are living in a society that has lost its sense of morality, lost its sense of compassion. And we can throw as much legislation, policy and protocols at these problems. We can create bodies and institutions to oversee appropriate treatment of these demographics. But you cannot legislate a human being to act with compassion. And I call for a national revolution of compassion, because I see this as the primary and mechanism to heal a traumatised mind. Our brains are neurologically wired to, I believe, be loved by God. And that ecstatic love that we receive from God is really what is missing in our society. But failing that, love from each other, love from humans, love from leaders, love from officers, love from doctors, by way of compassion for their plight and their traumatic situations, is urgently needed too.
Just to clarify a point there, there's detail in your statement, but, correct me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the point you make when referring to love from God is that religion played a role in society for decades and indeed centuries, that due to, which is somewhat declining or disappearing due to the increase in no-religion members of the population. And you're saying that that needs to be recognised and replaced. In other words, yours is a social science-type analysis rather than a religious one, is that right?
What I was referring to in the submission is that we refer, I refer to four different census reports, starting from the census in 1911, which revealed that at the time, 99.63 of the population believed in some kind of religion. They had some kind of connection with God, jumping ahead 110 years later, at the most recent census. There's been a precipitous 40% decrease in those who believe in God and participate in some kind of religion. And how this is relevant is that at one point in time, coming home from World War One and World War Two, we, as human beings, derived the warmth of compassion from religion, from religious communities. And the point I'm raising is, what have we replaced that with? And I think there's a reliance in psychologists and psychiatrists and medications and doctors to fulfil that compassionate need. But I argue the point that that is insufficiently addressing the paucity of compassion in society.
So the topic after the corpus striatum that you address in the statement is the need for compassion and the loss of compassion in contemporary society. So we've covered that ground. The next topic you go to, you've touched on a little bit, is the propensity to label all problems as PTSD. I might just ask the operator to highlight two paragraphs from page 40 and page 41. They're not in sequence, but the paragraphs are 248 and 252, just as a prompt. You say here that you accept that PTSD and the trauma of war are a large part of veteran suicide. However, you have the view that it's not everything. Is there anything that you wanted to say today to introduce? Is there anything that you wanted to say today to introduce or elaborate upon what you put in your statement on that topic?
I can say from my own experience here that definitely had trauma from war, but the greater trauma that I had was organisational trauma, betrayal trauma, of having my medical career and military career ending with no compassion given in those moments, no wisdom from the Defence Force and wider community and abuse received and mocking from the wider community for not adapting to that experience. I think that there's a general narrative amongst the civilian population, that the problems that we have as veterans are causal to always to PTSD, having any conversations with any civilians, that's what they think is the cause of every suicide that we've experienced. And it's indicative from my story and from many others, there are much greater problems than war and PTSD and legal problems, administrative problems that need addressing, that are causing suicides. The problem with honing the narrative on PTSD is that all of the funding goes towards remedies for PTSD, which is obviously problematic when we have legal problems, administrative problems and compassion problems. And I think this played out in a well-intentioned meeting that took place in the Treasurer's Office. I believe that they thought in their own mind that the problems that we veterans were experiencing were consequent to PTSD and that was what we needed solutions surrounding that. But they didn't engage with the veterans, I think that was their fatal flaw. The problems we have, we do have PTSD, I think everybody does in our society now. When you consider the major traumatic events that have taken place in the last fifty years, nine eleven, the Christchurch killings, the Port Arthur massacres, Covid, bushfires. I mean, we're constantly surrounded by trauma, I think everybody is traumatised. I think everybody probably has some elements of PTSD to some extent, I think that's potentially a normal part of life. But when we look at a problem such as veteran suicide and analyse it through the spectrum of a psychological problem only, or a lack of resilience problem only, we fail to take into account the broader medicolegal, biopsychosocial aspects that we do need addressing.
The next topic your statement addresses is called failure to keep adequate statistics. I'll just ask the operator to go to page forty one and forty two. And if we can expand the heading I mentioned in paragraphs two fifty six and two fifty seven, we get the beginning of your discussion of this subject, could I just ask you to focus on one aspect? Your statement refers both to the failure to keep adequate statistics, but also to an overreliance on statistics at the expense of listening to individual veterans' experiences. What can you tell us about the right balance between statistics and listening to individual accounts?
I'm a doctor and a scientist and part of my everyday role is to look at statistics and to trust them. But for some reason, in the veteran demographic, the statistics have been wrong. When you consider only in two thousand and twenty, the statistic that was being generated from bureaucratic agencies and even universities was that at the time we had a recorded three hundred and sixty five veteran suicides was the number that was being published in media and wider research papers. But the veteran community was mourning the loss of at times more than one weekly veteran suicide with their names and their photograph on social media websites. We were counting a lot more than three hundred and sixty five. And then the parameters were suddenly changed around the announcement of the Royal Commission. Unfortunately, the correct number of veteran suicides was published at over one thousand six hundred. But even then, I don't think that we can conclude that that's the correct number when the fundamental basis of statistics is a headcount. Counting is of absolute importance in statistics. And to this date, we still do not have an exact headcount of the number of veterans in Australia. I think we have definitely, there have been attempts to bring together the information from PMK's data of ID numbers and of Defence Force personnel, past and present, to reconcile that with the births, deaths and marriages database. But we don't have any idea how many veterans are in Australia existing, how many homeless, how many have committed suicide, how many living under the poverty line, we have no idea. And so the emphasis upon what would have been the National Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide was going to be aligned with the National Institutes of Health and Welfare, which was to look at suicide through the statistics of age, gender and length of service only. What this meant was that the statistics were based upon numbers that were wrong, as previously indicated, and removing all of the emotional subjective data, forcing the heartbreaking stories of veterans and their families through an objective analysis of the problem. I think that answers the question.
Thank you. The next topic that your statement addresses is compulsive gambling and alcoholism. And you've actually touched on it when you were discussing matters to do with the brain. But I'll just ask the operator to bring up a bit of page forty six, in particular paragraphs two eight three and two eight four. These two paragraphs are just a sliver of a multi-page discussion of these compulsive behaviours. Just firstly, in paragraph two eighty four, in the first line, you refer to these venues, just to put it in context from the rest of the statement, you're referring in particular to RSL clubs that provide extensive gambling opportunities and machines.
It's no secret that RSL derives a significant portion of its funding from gambling and alcohol consumption of its patrons. We've had big problems in Australia trying to identify individuals with gambling problems in general from venues, casinos, et cetera, where gambling is predominant.
And, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, if there was more you wanted to say.
Where RSL is relevant here though is that the RSL is constituted in section four A of its constitution to provide rehabilitation and medical care of its return services and Defence Force personnel and veterans in general. So on the one hand, they're constituted to rehabilitate the stigma of, enigmata, rather, of trauma, including addictions and gambling, et cetera. On the other hand, they're providing a venue where gambling and alcohol form a primary means of funding for that institution, which I think is almost cannibalistic.
You say at two eighty three that you have fundamental doubts as to the ability for most venues to reliably separate those with sorry, those gambling who have addictive potency from those who gamble without addiction. And you have fundamental doubts about whether they're able to distinguish traumatised patrons from non-traumatised ones. You have looked into addictive behaviours of various kinds, including going to an international conference on opioid addiction, which you've mentioned in your statement. Against that background, have you been able to, sorry, what would you like to tell us about the connection to veterans' wellbeing in terms of gambling in particular and other addictive behaviours?
Counsel, I think we firstly need to recognise and solidify the connection between trauma and addiction and then start compassionately treating both. We are living in a country that is well behind the rest of the country in its treatment of addictions and compulsions and compulsive spectrum disorders. Portugal is an interesting analysis. As mentioned, I went to the Harm Reduction International Conference in Portugal a couple of years ago, hearing evidence given by the Human Rights High Commissioner, Michelle Baccalat, as well as high-level Portuguese officials and drug and alcohol specialists from around the world. And recognising that there was a remarkable decrease in the amount of potent and dangerous, or any kind of drug use in Portugal, particularly IV heroin, consequent to a paradigm shift that relied upon reallocating funds away from the prison system into the healthcare system, redefining addiction as a healthcare problem, a medical problem, not a criminal one. And it works. But yet in Australia, we are still to this day punishing people, traumatised communities and demographics for their addictions and use of illicit drugs, on one hand. And on the other hand, we're finding that those drugs that they have been leaning towards are actually now implicated in drug designs for PTSD. But we're still punishing one and we're still treating the other, which I think is a discrepancy that is alarming.
Finally, in terms of topics, I wanted to get the operator to go to page sixty six of the statement. This, and if paragraphs four ten to four thirteen, which runs on to the next page, could be expanded, just as a prompt, this is part of a longer discussion about antimalarial drug trials. And you make a number of points about it, but this particular part of it is about the need for free and informed consent. And you begin by referring to the use of prisoners as people involved in clinical trials of drugs, and then you move into the use of soldiers. And you make a point about freedom of consent. If there's an elaboration or an introduction to that topic you'd like to give us, we'd be pleased to hear it.
Thanks, counsel. The emergence of plasmodium resistance to chloroquine was led towards the need for new drugs. Tefeniquin and Mephalquin proved to be effective, however, there were subjective observations of quite significant mental health injuries and suicides, which required further analysis. You're right, the point that I was making in this was that the Mephalquin was used on prisoners in the nineteen fifties at two correction facilities for the phase one clinical trials of Mephalquin. Jumping forward fifty years, the Australian Defence Force with Glasgow Smith Klein conjointly conducted Mephalquin, Antifetiquin drug trials, phase three clinical drug trials on our soldiers. A lot has been said about this issue and the issues that I'm trying to draw your attention to. The fact that both prisoners and soldiers have similar decrease in consenting freedom. And it has to be that way for soldiers. We cannot have soldiers who are arguing individual rights about which vaccinations they have and which prophylaxis they have, which medications they have before or during a battle. No one is permitted in Defence Force to operate as a singularity, they are a uniformed body for a reason. So we hand over our freedoms to those in charge of us to make informed decisions on our behalf. And in this instance, even though there was great need to provide antimalarial prophylaxis for our soldiers in East Timor, when consenting freedom is the foundation of a drug trial to make it ethical, when we know that our soldiers have blurred consenting freedom, then our soldiers should not be used in any kind of drug trial for which consenting freedom is of paramount importance to make it ethical.
Thank you. Doctor, thank you for your evidence, sharing both your story and drawing our attention to a number of issues for potential research. Commissioners, those are my questions. In part by way of correcting an earlier slip on my part, I note that no one has applied for leave to cross-examine, but I yield to the three of you for any questions you might have of Dr Mealy.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Dr Mealy, and thank you. It's evident that you've given consideration to a lot of these issues. And I just want to assure you that the Royal Commission is likewise considering many of these challenging issues. I want to go first to the issue of the intergenerational trauma and the fact that we have many of our Defence Service members who actually come from a military background. I guess I'm making an assumption, but I'd seek your opinion. You talked about the potential, if I could say, risks associated with that multigenerational military background, that being the passage of intergenerational trauma. Do you see positives as well as the risks? And if so, could you elaborate on those?
Interesting question, and I think you're right. I think that experiencing trauma opens your eyes to the plight of others who are experiencing hardship and trauma too. And I think if compassion is the response to their plight, then that's definitely a positive. Is that what you're asking?
No, I guess I was just, you were conveying potentially the downside of a of a multigenerational military background, I'm just wondering if you saw upsides.
To a military family or the trauma associated with it?
No, to the military family.
Absolutely. I think there is a community that I think only people who belong to that veteran community can appreciate. Unfortunately, a lot's happened in the last five years in particular that's eroded that community and created division and distrust, consequent to the politics surrounding justice issues of veterans. I hope that we can restore that community, but yes, absolutely. The Defence Force family that I have are just as much family to me than my genetic family. I have two mums, in fact, another one is watching, both of them are watching this separately. One's my birth mother and the other is a Defence Force family, matriarch, who has taken me under her wing and helps me quite a lot. And this is not uncommon in the Defence Force space for people to really care for each other, really care for each other.
So just touching though on the issue of the intergenerational trauma that may well be present in a military family, I'm assuming, but I'll just seek to clarify with you, you're not suggesting that we shouldn't be recruiting individuals from a military family?
Are you saying, what's your question, I'm sorry?
I'm just wanting to be assured that you're not suggesting we should not recruit.
Oh, absolutely not, no, no.
So given that's the case and recognising the potential for intergenerational trauma, what do you think defence could or should do differently?
I refer to historical treatment of soldiers. Every soldier, every military of every era has recruited from a traumatised demographic or a demographic that has significant financial hardship, that otherwise would have become criminals or lost in systems. It's the prerogative of a good Defence Force leader to turn that potential soldier into an upstanding citizen, that's their job, that's their job. It's their job to take the messiness of someone with multigenerational trauma, for example, from multiple generations of military background, to with compassion turn them into something that is functional and noble. So I think compassion is where the solution lies.
So what does that look like? In a Defence Force that showed compassion, how, you know, what would look differently?
I draw attention to sitting behind the couch growing up in Pakepangul Army Base when my dad was the CEO and quite frequently we had soldiers sitting in front of the fireplace crying with dad helping them through their complex life problems. I think there are definitely some fantastic leaders in our Defence Force and who have done. It's a shame that this process to give justice to to military families has detracted from the reputation of such an amazing organisation with such noble people working for it. And there are definitely some, a large number, I think probably the majority of officers, who do care for their soldiers and do the best they can. However, there are many who don't. We need to start highlighting the compassionate things that Defence Force officers have been doing and are doing and highlight them with as much passion as we're highlighting the successes of our Defence Force and glossy pamphlets.
Sorry to press you on this, but I don't think this Royal Commission would disagree that there has at times been a lack of compassion apparent. But I guess I'm just wanting to paint the picture in some level of granularity as to what a compassionate Defence Force looks like. What would it do differently in recruiting and training and postings and promotions, healthcare treatment? Can you be a little bit more specific about how it would be different to what you see today?
Compassion is manifested when things go wrong, usually. I think that's where Defence Force is failing, when things go wrong. And I think it's a wider societal problem too. We have a tendency in Australia to, when things go wrong for an individual, to approach them with policy, legislation and protocol. But we need compassionate, wise and decent human beings to apply context to the situation of someone who is experiencing hardship. All of the context, especially military context, to kickstart compassion in that instance. I think that's the first step to compassion is to allow that context to come to the forefront.
And how do you see that being developed or applied? I mean, is compassion something, in your view, that can be taught? Or is it written into policies or, you know, protocols?
I think it's something that can be lost. And I think, again, with so many traumatic worldwide events, I think it's possible, you're the expert, Commissioner Brown, but it's possible that human beings have a tendency to cut off their empathy when there is just so much to need for compassion. And I think that that severance of empathy foreseeably stops the flow of compassion. Whether it can be taught or not, I mean, I think, I'm not sure how reliable testing for an emotional intelligence quotient would be in all elements of public office and military as well. I'm not sure how reliable and how fakeable it would be to have your emotional intelligence analysed. But it probably needs to be done.
And with reference to the work you looked at around the corpus striatum, the amygdala, et cetera. I mean, it's undoubtedly an area of, you know, kind of emerging knowledge. Did you, and you made the link to compassion and to the addictions as well. Were you also intending to draw attention to potential developments in things like biomarkers and, you know, investigations, et cetera? Or is that not something that you?
It's probably a bit outside my scope of research and knowledge.
You said there's too much focus on PTSD. That the community as a, at large, kind of thinks that everything now must be due to PTSD, including suicides. And again, I think this Royal Commission would agree with you that there certainly, suicides are not just about PTSD. That's certainly what the evidence suggests to us. But again, how should that view be changed? How could it be changed to reshape the views and understanding of the community to, and within Defence? What needs to change to take that focus off PTSD?
I think we need to start de-incentivising civilians getting involved in our welfare and healthcare services, excluding veterans from the entire conversation, which has been, I think, quite embarrassing for our country over the last decade. The number of civilians who have entered with pecuniary interest into the form of veterans' healthcare and welfare with solutions without actually asking us any questions whatsoever. I think it has to start there. I think we need to start asking questions. And I think this Royal Commission is vitally important, precipitant to generating proper conversation about what our problems are.
So really, you're advocating for a greater voice for veterans in decisions that are being made?
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. When you consider that we sign away a lot of our freedoms in the Defence Force, including our right to approach media or our right to have autonomy and agency during our service. But when things go wrong, we expect civilians to kick in for us and to give us a voice in media, give us a voice in judicial systems and amplify our voice. But that's not happening. There are too many civilians speaking on our behalf about veterans' issues.
How do you think that could happen? To have a greater veteran voice? Because to some extent, some of the ex-service organisations, I guess, would see themselves as playing that role. But clearly, you don't see that necessarily as adequate?
I think that there is definitely a need for ex-service organisations as well as their having a voice. But when their organisations become compromised to becoming loyal to the political parties funding them, I think that that has had a tendency to erode the things that they say about veterans' issues. I think that the issue of giving veterans a voice to speak is not dissimilar to other demographics who presently are needing a voice to speak about their own issues. There's just a tendency in our country for people who are adjusted and don't have trauma and have all of the education and all of the advantage to be nominating themselves as the subject matter experts of people who are too traumatised sometimes to speak for themselves and require an extra avenue to provide that voice.
And so I go back to the question, what would it look like to give veterans that voice? Do you have a concept in mind? I mean, you've got the broad concept, but the kind of model and by which it could occur?
I think we need to have changes made in our media and judicial systems, healthcare and welfare services, that to start from a start point of talking to veterans, engaging them and asking what their problems are.
And likewise, could I ask the same question? You advocated around the statistics and the challenges that can come with the statistics being devoid of the emotional and subjective data. Again, how do you think that could be better portrayed?
Well, I mean, I gave it a good crack making documentaries about veterans and interviewing them to provide that emotional subjective data to a country that would only look at their issues through the lens of psych problem. And I have to say that I was punished relentlessly for making those videos vexatious complaints to my registration authority. I lost my medical registration when I fought so hard to get it back. I became unemployed for four years, homeless. During the emergence of COVID, not a fortuitous time to be homeless. But I don't understand why there is a level of dissonance towards the emotional subjective data of traumatised people. I can't explain that.
Yeah, no, I mean, and again, I think this Royal Commission has very much valued the emotional subjective data that we have been fortunate enough to receive by way of lived experience testimony, private sessions, submissions, et cetera. I'm just wondering whether you had, again, a model in mind of how that could be continued post this Royal Commission so that it does continue to inform the whole ecosystem, I guess.
Look, I have various ideas. I mean, I think it starts from proper management of Defence Force personnel and veterans with the Human Resources Department. I think it's probably a good place to start. An ethics committee, as I mentioned earlier, to provide ethical advice to those making decisions on our behalf. And also to allow, having an ethics committee that allows veterans to provide insights about their own plight. I think that's a good place to start. I like the idea of a national commissioner moving forward. But again, I think it does need to be rebranded and the scope thoroughly explained to our demographic, its objectives.
Can I just go back then to the issue of suicides? And you talked about perhaps the terminology not necessarily being accurate in some circumstances. And you were advocating for a thorough investigation into suicides, talking to people, institutions, organisations, et cetera. Do you have any knowledge or reflections about the investigations into suicides that occur in the Australian Defence Force?
Any, sorry, can you repeat the last part of the question?
Do you have any knowledge and or reflections about the investigation processes that currently apply when there is the death by suicide of someone who's in the Australian Defence?
Within the Defence Force? I don't think I'm appropriately able to answer that, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, thank you. And my last question refers to the issue of consent for participation in drug trials. I think if I've understood you correctly, you're saying basically there should, that soldiers, sailors, aviators, Australian Defence Force should not be participating in drug trials, full stop.
Yes, I think that that's the case. The cornerstone of an ethical drug design is consent and consenting freedom. I think too much conversation has surrounded this issue about informed consent, but with the implication that the information was or was not provided in an appropriate manner. But the consent is the aspect. We know Australian Defence Force personnel cannot consent on their own accord about what they take and what they can't take. So their consenting freedom is therefore violated. And so it's inappropriate to be using Defence Force personnel for phase-one, two or three clinical trials.
There is no such thing as informed consent in the Australian Defence Force for participation in a trial?
There is informed consent. But consenting freedom is not possible for Defence Force members.
Okay, thank you, Dr Mealy.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Sorry, Commissioner Douglas?
Thanks again, doctor. You mentioned in your statement and briefly in your evidence about the decrease in religiosity in Australian society, which you associated with a decrease in a compassionate response, particularly to former soldiers who may be suffering symptoms that could lead to suicidality. I've heard figures, not formally, mainly anecdotally, that suggest that those currently being recruited into the ADF contain only perhaps twenty per cent of people who had some form of religious belief. Is that consistent with anything you've heard?
I couldn't put a number to it, but my understanding within knowledge of Defence Force communities is that there is probably a higher level of religiosity of Defence Force members in the wider community as evidenced by the chaplaincy service and the reliance upon the chaplaincy service, which they do a fantastic job of providing compassion to traumatised veterans without the overlay of medico-legal information being passed on to the Defence Force that could jeopardise a member's career.
That really leads into what was going to be my second question, which is that, again, anecdotally and perhaps informally, I've heard from chaplains that even if that is the case, that there's a decrease in religiosity amongst younger members joining the ADF, they're still very responsive to what chaplains can help them with.
That's correct, yes.
And I gather also there are some chaplains being recruited now who are not necessarily affiliated with a particular religious faith, but can provide moral support.
Yes, that's correct.
We've also heard apropos of chaplains that they have often provided a resource outside the chain of command for helping military people, soldiers, sailors, aviators, to deal with problems within their chain of command, either by counselling or perhaps by informal reference up. Have you come across that too?
I have come across chaplains working in ways that are outside the rank structure of Defence Force. But I think it's really important to have an entity within Defence Force that understands the military context, that can provide compassion, that sits outside the remit of hierarchical structure. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Partly, one of the problems we've noticed within the chain of command is that if there's a complaint about the chain of command, there's not a very good formal structure outside it, except perhaps through the IG ADF or a redress of grievance. And that might involve a higher level of formality than might be appropriate to a particular situation. But it has been suggested that in the past, perhaps a chaplain could be an intervening force outside the chain of command, where some side base force, if you like, might be applied.
I think that would be a very good place to start. I mean, you're right in the sense that there is either illegitimate or impotent mechanisms of internal or external scrutiny when things go wrong in the chain of command or the structure of hierarchy in the Defence Force. There's just nothing. There is the IG ADF and there is the CDDA scheme and all the other schemes and protocols and policies and legislation, but they're not really working very well. And you're right, I do believe that advocacy, whether it's hypocritical advocacy coming from military doctors or whether it's from a chaplaincy service, somebody has to provide integral context that takes into account all of the issues that veterans have, including multi-generational trauma, including the trauma from twelve deployments, et cetera. To provide that context to negotiate on behalf of individual soldiers or sailors or aircrew or groups of them for change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Mealy. I want to talk about accountability. I mean, your experience is certainly enlightening. You get accused of something that's not quite right. And no matter what facts and evidence you put up, once the process began, it just takes on a life of its own and it's almost impossible to pull it back. But somewhere along the line, there was obviously a failure among leadership to say, just stop and look at this, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Here is someone who was performing admirably in very difficult circumstances and doing good in every direction. But if there was a mistake, rather than deal with the mistake and it's not even clear that there was a mistake, we've got to turf him out and get rid of him. How do you see, I guess it's an extension of the question that Commissioner Brown asked you. We are looking at ways to ensure accountability in the senior ranks. There are many good people that we've come across who are ethical and are doing good things from a leadership perspective. There's no doubt about that. But there are also many who are clearly not doing the right thing. And we've struggled to identify how to bring about accountability so that the leadership of the ADF does display humanity, does, not just by exception, but across the board, is compelled, if you like, to act in a much better way than some have acted in the past. Did you have any views about how to embed accountability? And you did talk about measuring EQ, which is one way, three sixty degree assessments, all of that is helpful. But what were your thoughts about, in the perfect world, if you were God, what would you introduce in terms of introducing accountability in the ADF leadership? you introduce in terms of introducing accountability in the ADF leadership?
I guess it's to be accountable to themselves, accountable to soldiers. I mean, we've lost God in society and I think that's stopped people being accountable to absolute moral values. I think people are now, and have been for the last, since Vietnam era, transformed absolute moral values into relativistic terms, what's right for me, what's right for my career development, what do I need to get myself to the Governor General's office? That upward focus of career advancement, of career risks within the Defence Force, I think is a very big problem. How do we transform that into accountability? I think it has to start with, in my own experience, if my CEO in Kabul had sat me down and said, what's the problem, Dan? Let's have a coffee and let's have a chat. It has to start in the moment where the problems are arising, but unfortunately, in the Defence Force and potentially wider space, that's the moment where leaders are walking away, they're taking a step back, they don't want to get involved, they don't want to get their precious reputations tainted by a problem. So accountability goes, a lack of accountability goes hand in hand with a loss of moral courage. And again, do you teach those things in RMC and AdFO? I don't think you can really teach them. But I think that a great idea, whether it's achievable or not, would be to work towards an annual week of amnesty in Australia where individuals and organisations and leaders of those organisations, rather, are incentivised and praised for coming forward into the public space, revealing all of their failures, all of their problems and the solutions they're going to take to rectify them. Turning the table on what currently exists, which is millions spent on glossy magazines, advertising, propagandas and successes, that has to change. We're, no, no one's fooled anymore. There are 1,600 people who are dead. We need to have a leadership that values accountability, values insightful scrutiny of themselves and their leadership failures and praised by society and not criticised for coming forth with those and not, you know, and not losing their careers over it.
Thank you, Dr Mealy. Mr Singleton, I understand there's no other matters?
There's no matters, nothing arising from me. Might the witness be excused from his summons?
Commissioners, before the witnesses are excused, can I just indicate there are two matters arising out of the oral evidence before the commission today, which may need to be clarified. We've tried to get to the bottom of them during the course of the morning, but haven't got there in the time available. It may be that they can be dealt with through the production of additional documents without the need to recall the witness, but I'm just flagging that at the moment so that it's, the commission is aware of that. In the event that we identify an issue that needs to be clarified, we'll liaise with our colleagues with Council Assisting and OSA as to the best process to deal with that.
Okay, thank you, Ms Moore. I propose to release the witness from his summons. We can certainly bring him back if required. Okay, Mr Singleton, if there's no other matters?
No other matters.
Doctor, we want to thank you for your evidence today. We want to thank you for the considerable preparation that you've put into the statement and for some deep thinking that you've done, obviously, about all the issues we're dealing with, which are incredibly helpful for us. And thank you for your moral courage and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Your excuse from your summons to appear today. If there's no other matters, we'll adjourn for lunch until 1:45, I'm told.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn to 1:45pm. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Ms Longbottom.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Caldis. Unless there are any preliminary matters, I propose to introduce the panel that we will be hearing from this afternoon.
Yes, please go ahead.
Commissioners, much of this hearing block has been devoted to examining the role of the IG ADF in providing oversight of the military justice system, independent of the chain of command. That oversight takes several forms, including the provisions of reports arising from select incident reviews, military justice audits and inquiries and investigations relating to military justice matters. Those reports include findings but also recommendations that are made by the IG ADF. But of course, the effectiveness of those oversight mechanisms is only as good as the capacity and the willingness of defence to implement the recommendations that come from those reports. This afternoon, we will be examining the issue of the effectiveness of those oversight mechanisms in the specific context of RMC Duntrune and two recent military justice audits and a select incident review report concerning that institution. The panel comprises both the President, present rather, and immediate past Commandant and CO of RMC Duntrune, as well as the current Director of Select Strategic Issues at ADFHQ. I call the witnesses. Commissioner Caldis?
Swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you, Brian Hickey, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you, Tracey Allison, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you, Anna Duncan, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you, Michelle Mason, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Commissioners, before I take you through and introduce each of the witnesses proper, can I ask that the operator please display the tender list? It encompasses some pages. Commissioners, I tender the documents in the tender bundle in the manner in which they are described in the list.
Thank you. They'll be accepted into evidence on that basis and allocated the next lot of numbers. But perhaps before you go on, Mr Fordham, I regret we have to bring this up, but I understand that the first draft of this tender list was provided to the Commonwealth on the 18th of August. There's 29 documents, I think, in total. I understand further that two subsequent versions of the tender list were circulated on the 25th of August and then again on the 1st of September. I understand that across the three versions of the tender list, only 10 documents were added and of those, five were actually the biographies of the witnesses. Not having received a response to any claims over the three versions of the tender list yesterday evening, the Office of Solicitors Assisting also identified a shortlist of eight priority documents that required a response for this afternoon's session. When did the Commonwealth finalise its position on confidentiality claims? And obviously, as you can guess, our concern is that in addition to the actual preparation of Council Assisting for the session, the Commonwealth obviously needs to be aware that there's a process which those assisting the commission need to undertake to ensure that the documents listed on the tender list are available in the hearing and where appropriate later for publication. So essentially, the provision of a confirmed position on confidentiality or other claims by the Commonwealth less than four hours before the session is due to start is probably not helpful.
Yes, Commissioner. I accept it's not helpful, but I...
Could you please just press the button?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I accept it's not helpful. However, there is a somewhat complex process where it's not a simple question of lawyers going through documents. There are instructions that need to be sought from a series of places within defence and where things occur over a weekend. Obviously, a number of people have been travelling. These are not excuses, but they are reasons. Everyone who sits behind me is doing their level best and frankly pulling some ridiculous hours in order to assist this commission as best it can. The confidentiality claims are very important for all the reasons that we have discussed on a number of occasions. I might also point out that many of the documents over which claims are made don't get referred to in the evidence and may or may not need to be published immediately. But I accept things can always be done better. There has been an attempt amongst the solicitors on both sides in order to sort processes better on both sides so that things can be done more expeditiously. And there are still moves between the solicitors to try and sort that process so that it is smoother and more timely.
Thank you, Mr Fordham. Regrettably, every time we bring these issues up, it seems to be your turn to be representing the Commonwealth. I don't know how it works with the rotation of senior counsel, but thank you. We're simply looking for solutions. It's not ideal, obviously, the situation at the moment.
I accept that.
And if you think there's anything we can do that's different, happy to hear it.
Yes, Commissioner, and the fact that I'm here is why I am here. If we can sort this, we will. There is goodwill on both sides to get requests made and documents provided earlier than is currently happening, but there are times when it simply can't be done. For instance, the witness who I will not name, for nobody's fault, I got the last version of the statement 10 minutes after the start time. These things happen, but we are doing the best we can and fortunately, it is not interfering with your ability to publish.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms Longbottom, is there anything you want to add or is she?
No, nothing. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
I'm going to ask each of you panellists to go through and introduce yourself to the Commissioners, but first of all, am I right to understand that each of you are graduates of RMC Duntrune? Starting with you, Brigadier Groat, am I correct, you're the current Commandant of RMC Duntrune?
That's correct. As the Commander of the Land Combat College, there's been some changes in the last six months, but essentially it is a similar job.
And when did you commence in that position?
I started, I took over on the 8th of December 2022 and took over the job proper after Christmas leave in January.
And you took over the position from Major General Duncan?
That's correct, Counselor.
And Major General Duncan, you were the Commandant of RMC Duntrune for three years between December 2019 and December 2022?
I was the Commandant from January 2020 until the 8th of December 2022.
And can I ask each of you, what is the standard posting length for that role? Is it two years or three years?
Normally, Counselor, it's two years, but it's at the service of the Chief. It could be longer.
And in your instance, Major General Duncan, is there a particular reason why it was three years?
There is, Counselor. At the time, the Chief of Army was transforming the personnel capability system. One of the five pillars to that personnel capability system was the transformation of Army's training. And to see through that transformation, the Chief asked me to stay on for a third year because some of the more significant changes in the way we're being organised and the culture reset, he thought, would benefit from a third year.
If I can turn then to you, Lieutenant Colonel Hickey, you're the current Chief Officer, or Commanding Officer, rather, and Chief Instructor of RMC Duntrune?
Correct.
And when did you commence in that position?
I commenced in that position on the 15th of December 2022, when I handed over from Lieutenant Colonel Allison.
And Lieutenant Colonel Allison, when did you commence as CO and Chief Instructor of RMC Duntrune?
December 2020.
If I can turn then to you, Colonel Mason, you don't have a present or material for this particular panel, previous role at RMC Duntrune as a Commander. You are instead based at ADFHQ.
That's correct, Counselor.
And am I correct that your title is Director of Select Strategic Issues Management at that institution?
That's correct, Counselor.
Now, material to the issues that we are examining today, what is the function of ADFHQ in terms of monitoring and overseeing the implementation of recommendations that come out of IG ADF reports?
So you may recall from Hearing Block Nine that my predecessor, Group Captain Dan Drynan, spoke in detail about our SIM function, but by way of summary, thanks to his good work, our team has expanded to 12 and there are teams responsible for implementing and assuring IG ADF reports. So I have an implementation team of two, an assurance team of three, a data team of two. One of those positions is currently vacant and is being filled by a successful candidate shortly. A Deputy Director Lessons, who is a Lieutenant Colonel Reservist with expertise in Commissions of Inquiries, Defence Centre for Leadership and Ethics and also a former CO. And then I have three other positions that support the wider Vice Chief of Defence Force Group, a legal team of two and a Royal Commission Co-Ord Manager. So to answer your question, I am accountable to the Chief of Defence Force for the implementation and assurance of agreed recommendations for select strategic issues. And a select strategic issue is one that has enterprise-wide impact, a need for individual restorative engagement, a systemic process change or might be particularly sensitive. And by that definition, my team are responsible for implementing recommendations and assuring them on behalf of CDF as they relate to all deaths of Australian Defence Force members.
So you were talking there specifically about recommendations that will come out of a select incident review inquiry report?
From the Inspector General of the ADF, yes, correct, Counselor.
But another issue that we're examining today are military justice audits. Does your Directorate have any responsibility in terms of overseeing or monitoring the implementation of recommendations that come out of military justice audits?
Not traditionally. Military justice performance audits and their recommendations are managed through service lines, but the longitudinal review, I think my predecessor referred to it as a horizontal scan, which was a proof of concept assurance task last year, 2247, did a horizontal scan of military justice performance audits received between June, correction, 1st of January 2021 and September 2022. And part of that was in our role to support the accountable officer for military justice. So it was a longitudinal scan to provide trends and understanding for the benefit of the enterprise, but we are not responsible for tracking those implementation actions.
So could I summarise it this way? Direct responsibility for monitoring the implementation of the outcome of military justice performance audits lies with the service?
Correct.
But ADFHQ may play a role in terms of having a longitudinal analysis of matters that come out of those audits as a whole.
Correct.
Now, I want to start the examination by specifically looking at IG ADF Select Incident Review Inquiry Reports. We've heard evidence this week that one of the functions of the IG ADF is to inquire into the death of a member of the ADF where there is a requisite connection with service. And where such an inquiry is held, the IG ADF is to provide a report about the inquiry, including the findings and recommendations deemed apt. Now, would it be fair to say, and this question might be best directed to you, Colonel Mason, the recommendations that arise out of those reports may extend to issues of systemic concern rather than matters that particularly concern the individual case?
That is correct. There are recommendations that link to individual requirements, so it could be updating a particular training course or training module, for example, with particular text, or it could be broader than that, that has an enterprise-wide impact. So it may have to be something like infrastructure updates, which are broader and impact the broader enterprise.
And where the recommendations concern systemic matters to do with a particular institution, such as RMC Duntrune, in the ordinary course, as I understand it, Major General Duncan, or Brigadier Groat, you might speak to this, as Commandant, you're given an off... or Brigadier Groat, you might speak to this, as Commandant, you're given an opportunity to comment on the draft report before the findings are made in effect as a requirement of procedural fairness?
That is correct.
And in terms of responsibility for implementing the recommendations that arise out of such reports, am I right to understand that there are dual lines of responsibility? One aspect of it sits with the Commandant of an institution such as RMC Duntrune?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other aspect of it, as you've touched upon before, Colonel Mason, sits with ADF HQ?
So our responsibility is to provide oversight and assurance to CDF that the implementation is occurring, but we are not the accountable officer or the action officer responsible for specific recommendations.
And so in practical terms, what does that oversight, what does that oversight look like? Can you look at a proposed action by an institution and say, look, we don't think it's sufficient to address the recommendation?
So I believe that the Royal Commission already has a copy of our implementation and assurance SOPs which details this process.
Yes.
But they have, they were correctors at January 2022. They have been updated. But in summary, when a recommendation is received, my team will do an internal meeting where we will review the report, look not only at the recommendations but also the findings and some of the observations. We will list those into a Select Strategic Issue Implementation Plan, or a SIP, as I believe you've heard about it, Hearing Block Nine. And against each of those recommendations, we will allocate a proposed accountable officer, a proposed action officer, and potentially a timeframe. And then we consult with those action officers and accountable officers to seek their feedback on how they believe it could be implemented. And there are occasions where upon our team's review of that report, we come up with additional recommendations more than what were in the original IG ADF report.
I guess my question is specifically directed to, and we will examine this in the context of a particular case, but as part of that process, you seek stakeholder input about their response to a particular recommendation or finding?
Correct. So that's part of the consult phase.
And if ADF HQ disagrees that the action will be sufficient to address the recommendation, do you have the capacity to challenge that action and require that additional action be taken?
In my experience, we haven't had a circumstance where we have had any pushback from any of the accountable officers or action officers, and we work collegiately together to achieve the intent of the recommendation. There may be times where a recommendation might not, as you would be aware, there are four categories: agreed, agreed no further action, agreed with modifications and not agreed. So the circumstance I would be talking about there might be an agreed with modifications, where we will, as part of that stakeholder consultation, they might say to us, look, you recommended that the training should be updated every two years, we actually think it should be every year. So that's an example where we might modify a recommendation.
I might like, I'm going to turn then to examine this issue in the context of a particular case and a particular Select Incident Review Report. Commissioners, I'm being quite conscious not to mention the details surrounding this particular report, but as I understand it, it will be displayed on private screens. Now, I'm going to ask that the document be displayed. Operator, it's tender bundle document number A, igd dot triple zero seven dot triple zero eight dot zero two two eight. And while that's coming up, can I confirm that the panellists are familiar with this particular report?
Yes.
And it concerned the death of a staff cadet member by suicide. Now, Major General Duncan, as I understand it, you were provided with a draft copy of that report?
That is correct. I was provided with a draft copy of this second report into this case during my tenure, and that is because the accountable officer was the Chief of Army and I was the action officer.
If I might just ask the operator to please turn to dot zero two six eight of that document. And as appears, and if the operator could please expand the second paragraph, this is a letter that was directed to you, Major General Duncan.
I recognise that.
And as is outlined there in the second sentence, the draft report was provided to the college particularly to give you an opportunity to review it, the findings and recommendations, and provide any relevant submissions in response.
That's correct.
And did you avail yourself of that opportunity?
I did, Counselor.
Now, if I could just take, ask if the operator could please turn to dot zero two six five and dot zero two six six of that document. There are there set out the findings and the recommendations that were made in relation to this particular case. Major General Duncan, is it fair to say and take an opportunity to review those, but that in broad terms, the recommendations that were ultimately made substantially reflected the draft recommendations and findings that were provided to you?
I cannot specifically recall the difference other than I do recall my feedback and that of the commanding officer that I consulted was not incorporated into the report.
So I'll come to your feedback in a moment, but you would accept that in broad terms, some of the systemic issues that were raised by this recommendation concern the specific intervention or support that was provided around training that was given to staff cadets?
I do accept that in the broad.
Including in relation to critiques about their completion of assessment exercises and the like?
I do accept that, yes.
And as you say, you were and you did take the opportunity to give some feedback in relation to those recommendations. Now, I might just ask if the operator can please turn to dot zero two seven four of that document? And expand paragraph 10. And I'll give you an opportunity to read that. If it's possible, if the operator could please display the balance of that paragraph on the next page as well. Now, I can give you an opportunity to go back to the particular recommendations if that would assist Major General Duncan, but my question is this. Your response to the preliminary recommendations was, in effect, that they're covered by extant policies and procedures within RMC Duntrune. Given the fact of the report and its finding, did you not have cause to reconsider the effectiveness of those policies and procedures?
We did. That was concurrent with my aforementioned extension in my role, the fact that Army was undergoing a cultural transformation of its training system, which was concurrent to this report landing, and that that transformation preceded this report. Transformation started in 2016, so there was a concurrency matter here around improving processes.
If I could just step that through, but you commenced in December 2019?
January 2020.
Oh, sorry, you've already corrected me about that. You start, you commenced in January 2020. This report is dated 2021 and concerns events some years beforehand. Can you explain to me why your view is that the existing policies and procedures address the issues arising out of the report? Am I right to say that changes were made after the events, the subject of the report? Or?
So at the time, notwithstanding this report, there was a complete overhaul of the manner in which we were seeking to develop leaders in the Australian Army, specifically officer candidates. That stemmed from an inquiry in 2016 that the accelerating differentials of our time required a more inquisitive, innovative leader. And in the Australian Army, that was called meeting the demands of accelerated warfare. So to that extent, under that transformation programme of the Army People System, the Chief of Army, through his Army Board in December 2019, had asked for a view of the syllabus, which meant accepting, removing density from training, for example, making sure that the learners were given an opportunity to engage fully in the curriculum. That was my recollection at the time.
I might just, I might just examine that then in the context of the specific recommendations. Operator, can you please go back to point zero two six six? And I particularly want to focus on recommendations one, two, and five, and I'll give you an opportunity to read those. Am I right, am I right to understand you to be saying the policies and procedures, the subject of those recommendations, were not in place at the time of the incident, the subject of the report?
It is not, I was not there at the time of the incident, subject to the report, but my understanding is that there was support, as mentioned in recommendation one, mentoring, sorry.
Sorry to stop you, Major General Duncan. My question is really, is what set out in recommendation one, two, and five, did that reflect current practice at the time of the incident, the subject of the report, or were changes made after that incident to policies and procedures?
I was not there at the time of the incident. My understanding, in particular, I could talk to recommendation two, for example, that has been the consistent setting in the Royal Military College of Duntrune. Recommendation one, that there is, there was that mechanism of support. And recommendation five?
Let's just, let's just stop and examine in the context of recommendation two. So I understand you to be saying this was something that was already in place at Duntrune? And am I right that this is something that's been in place at Duntrune since its inception?
That is correct.
So accepting that to be the case, given the findings that were made in the report, did you have cause to consider the effectiveness of that programme in its current form?
Yes, I did. And I was also mindful of much broader range of reform which we labelled transformation. And that context was very important in my consultation with my chain of command and his consultation with Chief of Army.
And if we could go back then to dot zero two seven four, I guess what I'm troubled by looking at paragraph 10, and this might not reflect the completeness of the observations you've made, is that the extent of the response is that the recommendations are existing policies and procedures. So it doesn't seem to be, at least on its face, a response that considers the effectiveness of those existing policies and procedures in light of the findings made in the report. Would you care to comment on that as a proposition?
Sorry, could you just repeat that question again?
Of course. Just have a look at, so I read this as being your response to those recommendations, and the effect of the response is that the recommendations reflect existing policies and procedures. That's fair? On one reading of that, the response is in effect, well, nothing actually needs to be done because we already have those policies and procedures in place. Is that a fair construction?
It is to a point because we were going above and beyond just those specific enhanced policies and procedures. There was so much more context than what the IG ADF had recommended that we were doing that led me to conclude that the recommendations were things that I was comfortable as the action officer were in place, but that we had gone so much forward of what, had leant so much forward from what the IG ADF had asked for, that I felt comfortable in making that deduction.
Would it be in terms of that observation, and I might, I'm going to unpack this with you in a little bit of detail in terms of the implementation process, SIMs process as well. Was there any disconnect in your view between the policies and procedures that were in place at RMC Duntrune and, for example, the staffing levels that enabled those policies and procedures to be adhered to?
So at the time of this report, which was 2021, let's check the, got it, okay. Like all units in the Australian Army, the commanding officer at the time did not have a full complement of personnel. You specifically raised that as a point.
But that's not reflected in, in your response, you don't reflect any of those observations here in this response?
No, because it was my deduction that it was not significantly material to being able to implement the policies, looking at the resourcing holistically.
And so, just to make sure I've completely understood your position about this paragraph, you didn't have cause as a result of this report to revisit the effectiveness of the policies and procedures, the subject of those recommendations?
No, I object to that, that is not what the witness said. There's a slight disconnect between policy and implementation.
I've given the witness an opportunity to correct me, so if she could complete her answer.
My respectful submission, that question should be withdrawn because it's drawing on an answer that was given, which is not the evidence.
I'll reframe the question. Major General Duncan?
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner. Let's focus on that first sentence in paragraph 10. Did you have any cause to revisit the effectiveness of extant policies and procedures, having regard to preliminary recommendations one to six?
I did in consultation with the Director of Military Arts and the commanding officer. So that statement remains correct, that they are all extant policies and procedures.
Where, if at all, is your consideration of the effectiveness of those existing policies and procedures documented?
At the time of this, my response?
Yes.
I did not see that I would need to comment on that. I was asked. So I don't believe it is documented in this, in my response.
Operator, can I ask you to please display tender bundle document number 13? It's def dot one two five six dot triple zero one dot triple zero one. Now, this is a noting brief for the Chief of Defence Force arising out of the inquiry Colonel Mason, you see in the right-hand corner, there is a reference to COS ADF HQ. Would I be correct to interpret that as Chief of Staff ADF HQ?
That's correct, Counselor.
And the effect of the comment is a requirement that ADF HQ monitor the implementation of the inquiry report recommendations. Can we just turn then to paragraph five on the next page? So that's dot zero zero two. And the recommendations that are identified there as being significant includes recommendations for RMC Duntrune to consider changes to support arrangements for cadets undergoing performance management? Yes?
I can see that, yes.
And Major General Duncan, it would be fair to say, would it not, that those particular recommendations I've taken you to previously, one, two, and five, they are recommendations that touch upon those issues of support arrangements for cadets undergoing. for cadets undergoing performance management?
As I recall them, and there were other initiatives underway that, as I mentioned, are not called out as actions we needed to do by this report, but that we were doing.
But in terms of what's been noted by the IGADF as being significant emerging out of this Inquiry Report, it's for RMC Duntrune to look at changes to its current support arrangements for cadets who are undergoing that type of performance management?
Yes.
Now, Colonel Mason, you touched on before that this is a matter that is particularly within the sphere of responsibility of ADF HQ, albeit being something that was not being undertaken in relation to this specific case at the time. You were posted to that division. Can I just get you to speak in broad terms to the SIM process? And I might do that if I can by reference to the Select Strategic Issue Implementation Document. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number 2A? It's lgu. quadruple nine. triple zero one. zero zero one two. Just while that's coming up, you gave an overview at the outset of a process by which ADF HQ oversees implementation of issues, including, as I understood you to say, findings that come out of a select incident review report such as this.
That's correct.
And am I right to understand that this document, which is called as a quick guide, in broad terms, gives an overview of that process?
It gives an overview of the implementation process, but not the follow-on assurance process.
So just in terms of the implementation process, again, as you've touched upon before, under the Prepare heading, there is, ADF HQ prepares a plan. There is a consultation process with stakeholders? And would I be right?
Stakeholders meaning proposed accountable officers and proposed action officers. And as part of that consultation, they might identify other accountable officers or action officers and give us additional feedback that might mean we broaden that list of accountable and action officers.
Can you give the Commissioners an overview of what the expression proposed accountable officers means?
Certainly. The Select Strategic Issue Implementation Plan, the SIP, is effectively a spreadsheet that tracks the implementation process. It in itself is the standalone document that travels the journey through this process. So there is a SIP consult that is circulated to stakeholders for their feedback. We then consolidate that, and the SIP then turns into an approve SIP that is sent to the Chief of Defence Force. And he is the individual who can approve that those actions should be implemented per the feedback from the enterprise. And then that SIP travels through its implementation. And then there is a closure SIP at the end of the process as well that goes to CDF to say, here is how we have been advised that the implementation action has been achieved, and we seek his approval to close that. It also includes in the covering brief assurance tasks that we have highlighted that we believe would be important for him to consider. And there are circumstances where CDF will actually direct for specific assurance action to occur as well.
So in terms of the concept of proposed accountable officer, would it be correct to say that a proposed accountable officer is an officer who will be accountable for the implementation of the actions arising out of the SIP?
That is correct. And traditionally, an accountable officer is a one-star or band one and above. And the action officer is traditionally at the O5, O6, Lieutenant Colonel, Colonel equivalent for Army.
And will the accountable officer and action officer typically be someone from within the unit or the training facility, the subject of the required action?
Depends on what the recommendation is, Counselor. So if, for example, it's a policy update that impacts broader, all of the services or an enterprise-wide, then we would go to the policy owner as the accountable officer and action officer. But if the recommendation is quite specific as to the actions that need to be taken to implement the intent of the recommendation, then it may well be the formation commander or the unit commander.
And what form does that accountability take?
So we spoke through the process broadly, that SIP, and once it is approved by the Chief of Defence Force, remains open and my team are responsible for providing updates to the Chief of Defence Force that implementation action is ongoing. So that can take the form of, formally, we provide two biannual briefs to the Chief of Defence Force on the status of implementation of our various bodies of work. But also, the Chief of Defence Force will receive SIPs as they arrive, so there's that piece as well. And we will reach down to the accountable officers and action officers to seek updates from them on how their implementation is going. You would also be aware that in the implementation plan itself, there is a timeframe by which accountable officers and action officers have proposed that they would be able to achieve implementation. And so we seek an update from each of them as to how they are progressing in these important implementation actions.
So we might then turn to the SIP for this particular Inquiry Report so we can examine it in the specific. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number 14? def.1256. triple zero one. zero zero one nine. So this is an example, as I understand it, Colonel Mason, but correct me if I'm wrong, about a SIP in the prepare phase, because it includes stakeholder feedback about a proposed course of action in relation to recommendations by the report?
Correct. So the accountable officer has provided that feedback to us so that we can then provide that to the Chief of Defence Force for his determination as to whether an implementation action should be agreed or not.
And in terms of that implementation process, the reporting question in this case was prepared, I think, in September of 2021. And this plan is dated February of 2022. Is that a typical period of time between recommendations and an implementation plan being prepared?
I can't comment on that, I'm sorry, Counselor, it was before my time.
In terms of ADF HQ, do you have, for example, key performance indicators on timeframes for production of plans of this type to monitor implementation of recommendations?
So the quick guide that you put up on the screen earlier, you may have noticed there were timeframes along the bottom for each of those phases. They are self-imposed timeframes that we seek to achieve for completion of each of those phases. My understanding is those timeframes were developed by my predecessor and the former Chief of Staff through their inquiry into pulling together the documents for the interim National Commissioner. And so they sought together to work out what they thought would be appropriate timeframes to achieve that implementation across each phase.
And we can go back to it if necessary. But looking at that document, it seems in broad terms, the preparation phase is about 10 weeks and the execution phase is about 22 weeks. Does that sound about right?
That's correct.
Okay, so looking at this particular document, are you able to explain to Commissioners what the column headed RO Response to Recommendation denotes?
So this is the old terminology of Responsible Officer. We now use the term Accountable Officer and Action Officer. So RO there stands for Responsible Officer Response.
So it's right to interpret this column as identifying the accountable officer's response to the proposed recommendation? If we can ask the operator to please turn, for example, to dot 0021 on that document and highlight row 5. So Commander, sorry, rather, Major General Duncan, am I right to understand that you would have been the RO or Accountable Officer who provided the response to this document?
The accountable officer is the Chief of Army, as mentioned there, and in conjunction with the commanding officer at the time. So my name is, my appointment is in brackets. I was asked in late December to comment on this implementation plan. That actually came to me in January. So my office, my legal counsel, was asked in December of that year to inform the implementation plan. And in January, I formally wrote back with my recommendations.
And so if I could just examine this, particularly in the context of Recommendation 5? So that marries up to one of the recommendations that was made in the Inquiry Report. It pertains to, in effect, quality assurance with respect to critique, marking and assessment of exercises of staff cadets. You'd accept that?
Yes, that's right.
So under the heading RO Response to Recommendation, there is in brackets the statement, no further action? What does that denote?
It denotes that the accountable officer, in this case, the Chief of the Army, assesses, has agreed the recommendation, and furthermore, has made an assessment that since the time, what is happening now is an appropriate satisfaction of this recommendation. And if you go to the details there, it demonstrates how the Army had, in fact, exceeded the requirements of the recommendation in its practical application.
When you say it had exceeded the expectations of the recommendation, where does that appear from the response?
So if you go to the third paragraph, RMC Duntrune is at the forefront of the implementation of Army's future-ready training system through a focus on learning culture that reframes the instructor-trainer relationship to one of coach-facilitator and learner, who in partnership seek to achieve learning outcomes, as described in the R O C D Green Book. That Green Book, the mission of the college, standing orders, SOPs, codes of conduct between instructors and trainees, were all reviewed commencing mid-2020 and into the period of this final consult, which was, if I recall, early 2022.
Where does it appear from this response that those policies and procedures were reviewed in mid-2020?
It does not say that, Counselor, as you pointed out, in time, but it does not call out the time in which the transformation commenced. But the Chief of Army's accountable officer was being briefed in his Army Board monthly on the transformation of his people system.
And so would I be right to understand, Major General Duncan, there will be documents by which we can track through the specific review of policies and procedures that were in place at the time of the incident, the subject of the report, and determine how they were assessed in light of the findings coming out of that report?
I would say, Counsel, that those changes were not in direct... Remember the concurrent activities that I explained? There was requirements to meet these recommendations, but the Army had already started a transformation programme. And it would be easy to correlate in time and space changes from the mission, the Green Book, standing orders, because we wanted to ensure we were building future-ready Army officers that would correlate to the requirements as recommended and accepted from the IGADF report.
But would you accept, Major General Duncan, that it would be apt to examine those policies and procedures in light of the findings and learnings made from that particular Inquiry Report?
I would accept it. I suppose perhaps on reflection, myself and the Chief of Army were so deeply involved in the transformation that it might have just such assumed and lived practical implementation that we have not called it out in this response.
And in that vein, can I just ask the operator to please expand the first sentence in that row? So it is, the proposition in that sentence is that assessment practices as detailed in the particular SOP are conducted in a fair, equitable and supportive manner? That is an assertion of a particular state of affairs. Where is the detail in that particular row that makes good the proposition that those assessment practices do have the application that they're asserted to have?
It is the attestation of myself and the Chief of Army.
Okay. So it is an assertion of fact from the accountable officers without the detail being given to support that statement?
Correct, noting that the Chief of the Army was tracking the transformation monthly and the Deputy Chief of Army was tracking in more granular detail the transformation of the Army People System in his and then her Army People Company Steering Group.
And this is really a question for everyone on the panel. Would you accept that the effectiveness of reports such as this from the IGADF are inextricably linked to their implementation by Defence?
Yes, absolutely. And perhaps I could provide some more detail that might assist?
You can, and I will step through it in a bit more detail. But before you give your further response, in that respect, looking at the types of things this Royal Commission might recommend in terms of ensuring that effectiveness, do you think that there is room to be more prescriptive, not just in terms of asserting a particular state of affairs exists in response to a recommendation, but actually providing evidence to demonstrate that?
Yes, absolutely. And it wasn't this recommendation in particular, but there was another recommendation that further evidence was provided later of the application of the change in policy.
Okay, well, and can we test that then, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, within the context of Recommendation 2? So if I could ask the operator to please turn to dot 0020 and row 2 of that document? And just expand row 2. So this is a recommendation that we spoke about earlier about a system of mentoring within the training facility. And consistent with the evidence that was given earlier, the response is that the training, sorry, that that programme has been in place since the inception of RMC Duntrune. On its face, one might be concerned by reading that the response to a recommendation of that type is really just to look back to the fact of a programme that has been in place since before the incident and a response that doesn't seem to grapple with the findings or the recommendations arising out of that incident? Would you accept that's a fair concern on the face of that response?
I accept that on the face of it. However, the detail below that assertion is the training programme and the experience that has grown through the institution, not only during my tenure, but is continuing today. So I think initially, in the inception of the college and the beginning of the Corps of Staff Cadets, there was probably no training provided to those individuals who were put in positions of leadership. Whereas today, there's a selection process for those individuals. They have specific training, they have specific job descriptions. And the majority of those at the college strive for these positions because it gives them the opportunity to continue learning, but in a practical and safe environment, how to be a leader. And they also want to be able to mentor people in the way that they were mentored.
And in terms of those training programmes you've spoken about, were they instituted between the date of the incident, the subject of the report, and the date of this response, or do they predate them?
No, between. So if I was to provide you a timeline, that might assist. From mid-2020, the curriculum at the college changed to a more contemporary educational approach. There was a lot of density removed from the training programme. The trainees were provided more time to rest and reflect, more opportunities to have a practical demonstration, I guess, of what they were learning. That was about six months before I took over. And in my tenure, I tried to focus on developing a learning culture that completely reframed the way that instructors and trainees interacted. So rather than having a, if I can describe it as, you know, the trainees on one side of the line in the sand and the instructors on the other, and the instructors kind of saying, you've got to prove... you've got to prove to me that you're good enough to get over to my side, you're good enough to earn a commission in the Australian Army. We reframed that into being we're all in the one team. It's everybody's job to make sure that everybody has the best opportunity to graduate. So the instructor's role was changed from one of just being an assessor to one of being a coach and mentor.
So coming back to this really as a tool to monitor the effectiveness of the implementation of recommendations, would it be better to say the ineffectiveness of it lies in the lack of detail about steps that have been taken? It's expressed in a general way without the specificity that would enable the reader to actually see action taken?
Yes, I would agree.
And I guess the flip side of that is, on the A D F H Q side, there appears to be a lack of curiosity in terms of interrogating the response to determine whether or not it actually is an effective action in response to an implemented, in response to a recommendation. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that. What I would say in addition is that Duntrune is in the middle of Canberra and gets a lot of attention. So I think at an organisational level, there's a lot of interest and a lot of involvement of the senior leadership group. And so I imagine the reason that there wasn't further questions about this was that they were getting regular briefings from the Commandant at the Chief of Army's Senior Advisory Committee. And they could, you know, they were right there, they could see what was happening.
But in terms of a transparent governance programme, that doesn't appear from the face of the document. Would you accept that too, Colonel Mason?
I wasn't in the chair at the time when this was, but what I would say more broadly is this is effectively a summary. You could write four or five pages in response to each of these recommendations. And sometimes we do receive that from accountable officers and action officers. And that's provided to the Chief of Defence Force if the matter is particularly complex. There is a body of work underway in my team at the moment to look at the recommendations more holistically. We want to be able to better, to do better in terms of not just looking at the recommendations, but analysing the findings, the observations, and trying to draw out a more definitive process for both my implementation and my assurance team moving forward. That's Assurance Task twenty-three thirty-two that's currently underway. And it was a flow-on from Assurance Check twenty-two zero four, which was the subject of Hearing Block nine.
But you would accept, would you not, Colonel Mason, that the imposition of a page limit for brevity shouldn't take the place of demonstrated actual action to implement change in response to a recommendation?
I would say there isn't an imposed page limit.
No, but I'm saying, but I took you to be saying, look, in some instances, we get a lot more detail and others we don't. My point is, is in terms of A D F H Q's role, it is important that there be a transparent system that is curious about action. You'd accept that?
I would agree with that. And I would say, I can only speak from my experience, that we now have broadened the review process in the implementation phase. So your current copy of the S O P that you would have highlights that we didn't have the workforce a number of years ago to necessarily look at these issues in detail. Now that we have grown, we have a step there called the Implementation Assessment Meeting, where I have a number of individuals in my team come together and look at the report through various lenses, a legal lens, a data lens, an assurance lens and an implementation lens, so we can make sure that the recommendations are articulated correctly. And once the response comes back, we then review that in more detail to be able to say, is this actually achieving the recommendation for C D F?
How long has A D F H Q had the responsibility for monitoring the implementation of recommendations of this type?
So twenty sixteen was when the Commissions of Inquiry transferred across to I G A D F. But the SIM function itself was a team of two in two thousand and seventeen. That's when it commenced.
It's somewhat concerning, is it not, Colonel Mason, that given the importance of the recommendation that flows from I G A D F reports of this type, that it's been, what, six years or five years until you've been given the staff adequate to ensure that you can effectively monitor those processes?
I'm not necessarily focused on the timing of when that staff arrived. They have, the team has grown incrementally over time. But I'm very grateful to have them now. I do think this work is enormously important. And with extra workforce comes the additional capacity to do the level of detail as we currently are able to.
I'm now going to move to the next stage of the process in this particular case, which is the decision brief for the C D F. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number thirty, A C A dot one zero zero one dot triple zero four dot zero three nine five?
Counselor, could I also add? Generally, the I G A D F reports over time, if we go back to twenty sixteen, there are more recommendations in more contemporary reports. So when we have looked back at the I G A D F reports received in twenty seventeen, there weren't as many recommendations to implement as there are now. The I G A D F make far more recommendations in their current and more recent reports than they used to.
So this document, which is the C D F brief, it comes about two months after preparation of the SIM document we were just looking at. And you can see there in paragraph two D, the SIP, sorry, it's a SIP rather than a SIM, I should have called it. The C D F agreed to the SIP for recommendations made in relation to that particular report. Can we then ask the operator to please turn to dot zero four one three? Not sure if it's, oh, it is, thank you. This is, this is then the SIP. And it appears on its face to substantively reflect the document with stakeholder consultation we just went to. Now, in the right-hand column, am I right to understand this form might have changed, Colonel Mason? But in the right-hand column, there's a reference to C D F decision. There's agreed and N F A. Does that mean no further action?
That's correct, Counselor.
Can the operator then please turn to dot zero four one eight of that document? And highlight the handwritten comment at the bottom to the Commandant of R M C Duntrune. So the effect of that comment, which I understand was directed to you, Major General Duncan, was that the critical issue for you and your team who are accountable is the consistent high-quality application of all such arrangements, that is, the policies and procedures that are in place in the spirit in which they are intended for the wellbeing and development of our people?
That's correct. That's an instruction from the C D F to myself and the commanding officer of the Corps of Staff Cadets, which is another name by which the C O of R M C Duntrune is known, and that's Colonel Allison.
That was Lieutenant Colonel Allison at the time. Were those comments provided on to you?
There were.
And do you recall if it was in about, in or about the time that the C D F brief was denoted? So I think it's about April twenty twenty-two?
Maybe April or May, it was not too long after.
Now, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, am I right that in twenty twenty-two, a poll survey was conducted of your staff? And what were the findings of that poll survey?
That the staff were, their work-life balance was not good, that they felt they were at high risk for burnout.
And the impact of that survey prompted you to seek further staffing, am I right, for R M C Duntrune?
Yes, staffing had been, the results of the survey were not surprising to me. They'd been a consistent theme throughout my tenure. And the way that I had tried to manage that was by seeking additional resources, by providing regular stand-down periods, so about every three months in line with the school holidays, a stand-down period where the staff were not required for work, by trying to have as many long weekends as we possibly could to try and affect that work-life balance. Covid for some of the staff was very difficult because we did have trainees out at Madera and we were able to continue training in a bubble that was in accordance with the health directions. What that meant was people were unable to go home to their families. And so on many occasions, we had to change staff out to try and address the needs of the families as well.
So in terms of your requesting additional staffing, who in the chain of command did you direct that request to?
To the Commandant. I also spoke with career management for Army. And for context, Duntrune is one of the highest priorities for staffing. But as the year goes on, there are some unique things about Duntrune. We're located in Canberra. The staff are selected because they're particularly high-performing and they're usually at a level where they're about to go to the next rank. So they are easy picking, if I can say it that way, to be moved from the college. They're also required to do promotion courses while they're posted there. So that's another issue that takes staffing away from the operations of the college. And that can be from, anywhere from a month to three months.
And to the best of your understanding, who ultimately is responsible for deciding whether or not you be allocated with additional staff?
Career, well, so prioritisation is set by Army Headquarters at that time. And then the staffing of the Army is done by career management.
And what was the response you received to your request?
We've got personnel shortages everywhere and Duntrune is a high priority and you need to make it work.
Counselor, I can add to that. My former teammate is being very humble. Ultimately, I am responsible. Any superior officer for a commander has responsibilities to make sure that the mission and task they have set for their subordinates are adequately resourced. And we have a back briefing process where they can come to me, as Tracy did, and delineate their concerns, either ask me to stop things because I can't resource them or to place a higher risk threshold on the achievement of things.
But Major General Duncan, you don't actually have the power to direct additional staff to come to R M C Duntrune. Am I right to understand that?
I don't have the power to post people. That's a human resource activity. However, we are co-located. I have, on occasion, as has previous Commandants, provided support staff for said activities, for example, on a planning activity. So there are ways we can mitigate things. But ultimately, by this stage, the Chief of Army had cut an additional four units under the command of the Commandant R M C A. So that meant there were seven units in the formation. And as Tracy mentioned, at the time, the Chief of Army had made a deliberate decision to prioritise the staffing of the training establishments to make sure we have a recruiting and retention crisis. And we needed to make sure they were better equipped than our deployable units to generate the next generation of officers and soldiers.
So am I right to understand you to be saying that at that time, there was a push to ensure that institutions such as R M C Duntrune were better staffed?
That is correct. And that priority also extends to the Chief of Defence Force. And he had priorities such as, without going to too much detail, training institutions and operations.
So why then were you unable to facilitate Lieutenant Colonel Allison's request for additional staffing?
My headquarters was also understaffed and we were undertaking a transformation programme for the Australian Army.
And is there anyone up your chain of command beyond sort of going to C M A who you can call upon in terms of a request for additional staff? You identified risk issues. I mean, in terms of identifying, as I understand it, the poll survey showed fatigue and welfare issues with staff?
That's right.
Presumably, that is a workplace health and safety risk issue for you as Commandant?
It is. And now we have a, we actually call it out as a psychosocial risk. And resourcing is at the heart of that.
And in terms of escalating that workplace health and safety risk, what mechanisms do you have to do that up the chain of command?
So that's where I would talk to my commander of Forces Command. But as mentioned, his whole command was severely understaffed. We had, during the period of my three years of command, the Forces Command of the Army, which was at the time the largest part of the Army, it has since changed somewhat, was dealing with floods, fires, Covid Assist Task Force, unprecedented discharge rates. So it was quite a complicated scenario as we tried to maintain the generation of A D F warfighting capability.
And just looking at that comment from the C D F to you, Major General Duncan, it strikes me as being an inextricable tension between holding you accountable for consistent, high-quality application of arrangements in circumstances where you don't have the staff to enable you to fulfil that command. Would you accept that tension exists?
There absolutely is a tension. But again, people with the experience of Colonel Allison and myself have had decades in which we prepare for this very scenario on operations. So you never have sufficient resources on operations. You don't control the environment. You don't control the mechanical operation of your equipment. The enemy has a say. So I use that as context because we have a very structured military risk management system. It is one of the best I've encountered. I've done comparative analysis with industry partners. And in the military risk management system, we outline what we have to do, what the likely risks and consequences would be. And then we either adjust what we set out to do or we seek additional resources to mitigate the risk. So, and at Duntrune, officer candidates are instructed in that. So they leave with that understanding. So they're actually using it day-to-day themselves. So that relationship between the trainee and the instructor and that partnership that we talked about that adjusted in mid twenty twenty, that was in play at the same time. But as C D F said, and as any commander here will advise the commissioners, everything we do, the best of policies can be designed, but if they're not implemented, for our sailors, soldiers and aviators, they're for naught.
But I take it from what you said, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, and correct me if I'm wrong about that, as at April twenty twenty-two, when the C D F made this comment, you were aware of fatigue and welfare issues amongst your staff?
Yes, that's correct.
Major General Duncan, you would accept that, were you aware of that as well?
I was across all seven of my units, including my headquarters.
You would accept that the fatigue and welfare amongst the staff, training staff at R M C Duntrune was a clear risk in terms of the capacity of the institution to deliver on its core functions?
I would say that we had, and Tracy would, I would routinely speak. She might bounce ideas with me. I might reinforce that she absolutely had the command delegation to make those decisions. They were within her bailiwick. But there were things that she made a deliberate decision, I can't do this. For example, she started to reduce the, one that I can recollect, the training dinners to try and get the tempo more aligned. From back in twenty twenty, we had more prescribed, deliberate, no changes could happen to the weekly training programme, for example. So there was surety for trainees, there was surety for staff. Again, those three years, twenty twenty, twenty-two, were quite discombobulating for the Australian population. So it was a challenging time.
Accepting that to be the case, I think you've accepted it was a risk. It was a risk your C O sought to address by requesting additional staffing? Yes?
That's great.
And I say this with no criticism of you at all because it's clear, as you said, it was a challenging time. In terms of addressing that risk, you didn't have the capacity to bring more staff on because of constraints on the system as a whole?
That is correct, yeah.
So it is, it is an existing risk. And I'm going to come to this in a moment. But in terms of the manifestation of that risk, would you accept that the twenty twenty-two Military Justice Audit of R M C Duntrune saw that risk manifest in material deficiencies in terms of the institution?
Sorry, who was that, correct?
Yes, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, yes.
I do agree, I do accept that. And I would note that the focus was always on the people, the trainees, making sure that we were doing the best that we possibly could for them. And so other governance matters were of a lower priority.
But would it be fair to say, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, for a C O such as yourself, it must be a confronting position to be in to see a problem and be unable despite your it must be a confronting position to be in, to see a problem and be unable despite your best efforts to address it? Was that a concerning time for you as CO?
Absolutely.
And we might turn to that then in the specific context of this audit report. Operator, can you please turn to tender bundle document number 25, igd.0010.004.0477? And really, while that's coming up, I guess the thrust of the questions that I'm asking, which is hopefully clear, is the catch 22 of reports identifying problems that the institution is powerless to address. And it seems to me, but correct me if I'm wrong about this, but this Military Justice Audit really is reflective of that conundrum. Would you accept that?
I do accept that.
Can the operator please turn to dot 0478 of the document and expand paragraph three? Now, we'll come to it, but this audit found material deficiencies in the administrative arrangements for RMC Duntrune. I note there is a reference there in the second sentence to the commanding officer, which I assume is you, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, mentioning a number of vacancies at the time during the introductory session with the auditors. Why did you do that?
I highlighted it as I wondered if this might be another avenue where we could seek further resources and highlight the issues that we were having and the risk, I guess. I'm a bit of a perfectionist, so this was quite devastating to me that we weren't able to meet our requirements, that my people were exhausted and, you know, at risk of burnout.
So was your hope that by raising these issues with the IGADF, you might that way be able to affect change?
Yes.
And what response did you receive from either the auditors directly or subsequently the IGADF about those concerns that you raised?
So the auditors made it clear to me that they could see that that was the issue and that the staff had the best of intentions, but they understood that there were only so many hours in the day to meet all of these requirements. The kind of constant changing and the staffing deficiencies in the headquarters do were taken into account.
And that seems to come clearly through the audit report. There are sort of particular mentions of the staff obviously being highly intelligent and well-intentioned, but nonetheless, there exist these deficiencies in terms of their capacity?
Yes.
That would be a fair assessment. And can I take you in that regard to dot 0477 of the document, and in particular, the heading morale? Sorry, it should be 0482, rather, operator? And if you could expand the first morale and the first dot point in terms of some staff, now at the bottom of the page, please, last dot point. Would that be consistent, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, with your observations of issues that were being faced by staff at that time?
Yes, it would, particularly in regards to fatigue management.
So can I take a step back then and get your perspective on the utility of a Military Justice Audit such as this? One of the observations that have been made about this particular aspect of IGADF's function is that because a Military Justice is neutral, in the sense of requiring focus group members to participate in it, it can be particularly beneficial to leaders because it doesn't have the selection bias that other particular surveys may have. What would be your comment on that?
I agree. The neutrality is a strength. The preparation required for such an audit is extensive. And Lieutenant Colonel Hickey might talk to how he's managing that this year in just a moment. I think the other thing about this, the context around this audit report was, it was in the final week of the, final two weeks of the year, where it'd been a busy year and everybody was tired. So I feel that's probably, that context is important when reading some of these comments. If it had been earlier in the year or just after a period of leave, then, you know, people might have felt better about how things were going.
So am I right, this report was conducted at the end of November through to the 2nd of December 2022?
That's correct.
How long was that before you left your post?
I left on the 15th of December, and I believe the graduation was the 12th.
And what kind of preparation is required from the perspective of you as CO and Commandant to be ready for an audit of this type?
So there's certainly several weeks of work for the staff. And the key, I guess, appointments in the preparation are the adjutant, who is actually absent on a career course, and the Regimental Sergeant Major, who's the most senior soldier in the unit and is generally manages military discipline matters.
And so that, they were matters that adversely affected the capacity to prepare for the audit?
Absolutely. In particular, there was one of the findings where I was quite shocked to see the finding that support officers hadn't been assigned to our members who were requiring them, where I knew 100% that that was not the case. And when the adjutant returned from his course, I said, what's going on? Like, we didn't have those records in the right spot. And it was just that they hadn't been presented as evidence for the audit as they should have been. And that's completely on us. But it doesn't mean that we weren't providing that support.
Can you just be more specific about the particular recommendations that you're talking about there? Do they concern corrective training?
No, it wasn't about corrective training. It was about the formal assigning of a support officer for members when they required them. So that practice had been, there had been a form that had been done by the previous adjutant, and the new adjutant hadn't been using it. He'd done it through email correspondence instead. So when the audit came around, instead of having an objective folder with all of those documents on it, they were in his email.
And if I can just take a step back. So the purpose of an audit such as this is broadly to examine military justice matters within a particular institutional unit? That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And as a result of the audit, IGADF will make what are called either recommended corrective actions or alternatively suggestions?
Yes, that's correct.
Could you please explain to Commissioners the distinction between a recommended corrective action and a suggestion?
The recommended corrective action is something that must be done to rectify a deficiency. The suggestions are more around best practice and are optional, although I've not seen a situation where those suggestions weren't implemented.
And I think you've said earlier, Colonel Mason, ADF HQ has no oversight in terms of compliance with implementation of recommended corrective actions or suggestions?
For military justice performance audits, it is through service lines. What I can add to that, though, is certainly the material deficiencies identified through this particular report certainly drew the attention of the Army's senior leadership. And my counterpart in Army has advised me, might actually be published now, that there is a directive being published in Army to provide guidance to units about how to best prepare for military justice performance audits. So the headquarters are preparing a way by which they can empower their COs and empower their units to best prepare, acknowledging the hollowness in some of our staffing. But that would be something that you would need to take up with the Chief of Army or my counterpart in Army.
So Colonel Mason, am I right to understand you to be saying it's come to the attention of service chiefs in connection with the capacity to properly prepare for such an audit? Is that the focus of the publication that's just coming out in terms of directives?
So any headquarters wants their subordinate units to perform at their best. And every military justice performance audit is brought to the attention of the respective service chief. I think my understanding from Army is that their intention was to try and assist their units that will be subject to these military justice performance audits to allow them to prepare in the best way. And the directive has timeframes such as six months prior, you should be doing, considering this, three months prior, it would be worthwhile considering this, in order to assist them, given potential hollowness.
There is a bit of a disconnect, though, isn't there, between energies being put into a directive about best preparing for an audit in circumstances where the substantial finding of the audit was that the core cause was a lack of staff?
Perhaps I didn't make it clear. I think that's the reason why the directive is being issued, because acknowledging that we can't grow a force quickly in a uniform, it's about trying to assist the organisations that are already experiencing those challenges as to how best achieve their governance requirements and prepare for these audits.
Counselor, if I might add to that just briefly, for commanding officers such as Lieutenant Colonel Hickey and former commanding officer Lieutenant Colonel Allison, there is a plethora of policy and processes that they must implement as accountable losses. And in defence, in the ADF in particular, we are recognising that. At our command recall, of which I was a member, 1,700 individual requirements on a commanding officer. So what we are trying to do is take those vertical stovepipe requirements and horizontally integrate them for them. And I'll give you an example. In the Australian Army, we have an Army Incident Playbook, which takes a scenario. So you're a commanding officer, you've got a matter of unacceptable behaviour, for example. You can go to this playbook, which aggregates all the requirements of you and your staff, and it guides you through the process. And that's how high headquarters, above the layers at which we sat, can assist. And that's what Colonel Mason is kind to talk to.
Let's examine that, though, in the context of some of the particular things that came out of this audit report. Can I ask the operator to please turn to dot 0488 of the document in relation to corrective training? Now, as appears from the first paragraph in that report, corrective training is something that is used within RMC Duntrune not infrequently, 541 times during the review period, which was approximately a year. Yes?
Yes.
So on average, twice a day? My maths might be slightly off there.
In the context?
One and a bit times a day.
In the context of having more than 400 trainees in the college at the time, yes.
And if you turn then to paragraph 44, it talks about the responsibility in terms of administering corrective training, being vested in supervising staff to make sure that the procedure is properly applied. You'd accept that?
Yes.
Now, if you then turn to paragraph 48, please, on the next page. What's there identified is that focus group members said they didn't really have a clear understanding of the connection between a deficiency identified and a corrective training that was awarded. You'd accept that to finding from the report?
I do accept that to finding from the report.
And paragraph 49 then goes on to say that this is a risk area for your institution. Now, it strikes me that corrective training, that these comments do have some parallels between the inquiry report that we touched upon earlier in terms of a disconnect between an individual's understanding of assessment processes and the like, and what they're directed to. But to take up the point that you made, Colonel Mason, and you made, Major General Duncan, this isn't something that can be fixed by giving you more time to prepare for an audit. This seems to me to be a problem that directly relates to having a staff who's not exhausted, who is able to aptly discharge their functions. Would you accept that?
Was that question for myself?
Yes, for you, yes.
Yes, I would agree with that. Corrective training has been identified a couple of times as being a risk for the commanding officer. The purpose of corrective training and I guess the rules around it and how corrective training can be used in the college is discussed many times throughout training. I don't disagree that some focus group members said they didn't have a clear understanding about the deficiency in the corrective training that they were awarded. But I am confident that the policy and its application at the college in my tenure was sound.
But you would accept, if you could turn to the next place, page, rather, please, operator, suggestion 5A in the box. Amongst the recommendations or suggestions that were made was to ensure supervising staff of corrective training issues are aware of their accountability to ensure that the scheme is properly administered. Yes?
Yes, I agree. That's important.
And in terms of ensuring that a suggestion like that is taken on board and implemented, you need to have staff who have good morale, yes? And you need to have staff who are not exhausted, yes?
Yes, I agree.
So there is a link there between issues that have been identified in this audit report and questions of staff morale and capacity? Yes?
Yes.
So turning to the points that you made, Colonel Mason and Major General Duncan, I suggest that a directive about how to better prepare for an audit is not going to address these kind of substantive issues that are identified in a report such as this. You'd agree with that?
I see it as a great initiative of a headquarters in order to best assist their subordinate units. But it is certainly not the only action taken by the service headquarters in order to address hollowness, capability, morale. I can't speak on behalf of the service chiefs, but I flagged it as an example of where the headquarters are trying to assist.
But a better initiative might be to address the deficiencies in staffing levels.
I understand that that's what already occurs, Counselor.
Counselor, if I could add to that, please. There are many resources that we apply to generating Army's capability. People is a key one, and people are at the heart of who we are as a force. I was interested to hear of this initiative. And as a commander, I would advise the Commissioners frankly to say, preparing for an audit doesn't help us generate the capability. In fact, it becomes more about the process than the enhancement of capability. So we should look more fulsomely than just people. That's why we were looking for three years on how to transform the training. How do you create a learning experience which doesn't require the staff-to-student ratio that we currently have? How do you use different technology? How do you create constructed and virtual environments? You've got to look more holistically than people is but one resource. And we do know that investment is attempted to be made into those other ways to generate that training effect. And furthermore, for corrective training, we do build expertise in our non-commissioned officers and warrant officers in this regard to help guide. So that layer of expertise permeates all the areas of the college. So there would be another way that the commanders in future could balance making sure those people are attuned to their key responsibility in that regard. And role apportionment, being very clear about who's responsible for what role.
If I could also add from a headquarters perspective, I am acutely aware that all of the members of our senior leadership have front of mind their recruitment and retention initiatives. And they are working very hard to try and improve and increase both of those initiatives. So it is certainly something that is very front of mind of the senior leadership, that our staff are being, or our members are being asked to do more with less, and that they rely upon a variety of levers to try and address those.
To that point, I think you just said then, Major General Duncan, you know, people are one of Defence's resources. As I understand it, in the most recent Defence Strategic Review, it was said people are Defence's most important resource. And I say this with no criticism of any of you here. It's clear that a lack of resources presents a real and current risk for the wellbeing of your members. You'd accept that?
Yes.
And that is a risk that has clearly manifested itself in this report, in the observations made, particularly about your staff's fatigue and low morale. Yes?
Yes.
So if we can then just turn to the process of implementation of recommendations that come out of a report such as this. So I So I think you said beforehand, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, this report came sort of less than two weeks before you, this order came less than two weeks before you posted out of RMC Duntrune?
That's correct.
So, and the report actually wasn't provided until April of this year, am I right to understand that, Brigadier Groat and Lieutenant Colonel Hickey? So in terms of being able to address the issues identified in a report, when did you first become aware of them, if at all, Lieutenant Colonel Allison?
So there was an outbrief with the audit team, who informed me of the broad findings. And that was actually during my handover with Lieutenant Colonel Hickey, so we were able to discuss the findings and proposed actions to rectify immediately. Now, when the audit's conducted, there will be things that can be rectified as you go, as they find them, and we say, we can fix that immediately, and we do. And then when the formal report comes out later, if there's additional detail or things that weren't discussed in detail at the outbrief, then that's when you'd go through the implementation of those recommendations.
So in this particular case, how extensive was the outbrief and how effective were you able to be in the short two-week period between when you got it and when you posted out?
Unfortunately, I handed over quite a bit of work to Lieutenant Colonel Hickey. There were some things that we were able to rectify, but once again, it was the end of the year, we were preparing for graduation, as well as doing handover of key appointments. So there was not a lot of capacity to address the recommendations as they came out of the outbrief.
And that might be a convenient juncture to turn and talk to the process of handover between current and previous command staff. Just taking RMC Duntrune as an example, is it the case that the Commandant and CO generally serve across the same period of a particular posting?
Not necessarily.
Not always.
My question is really directed to this. One of the issues that the Commission has been examining is the length of tenure of those in command. And the length of tenure, as I understand it, is typically, at a training facility such as this, two to three years. And it would seem that presents a potential risk in terms of commanding officers being able to effectively institute change during their tenure. You would accept that's the case?
I accept that it may be seen as a risk. I think there are other things to consider here. First of all, we're people too, and I was certainly exhausted and burnt out at the end of my two years. The other thing is, as commanding officers in the Army, we have a concept of stewardship, and that is, you take a unit in the way that you find it, and you do whatever you can to improve the practices, look after the people, we're stewards of the capability. And I think that's probably true more than anywhere else at Duntrune, because of the storied history that the institution has. So, and Commissioner Kaldus did raise this with me when he came to visit the unit last year. I don't believe that the extension of the commanding officer's tenure in any unit beyond two years is something that I, that's not something that I would recommend.
And certainly burnout is sort of one of the countervailing arguments that we've heard. But in terms of that concept of stewardship that you've just spoken about, Lieutenant Colonel Allison, an aspect of that stewardship must be, would you accept, a continuity of corporate knowledge in terms of the issues that are being faced by RMC Duntrune?
Absolutely, I do, I do accept that. I think another factor here is the offset of key positions within the college.
And that's really what my question was directed to, is in terms of that offset of key positions, is it something that is best addressed by having staggered postings for Commandant and CO, or staggered postings for CO and second-in-command? Do you have any observations, any of you on the panel, that you'd care to make about that?
I might start, Counsel. So the Commandant of RMC commands seven units, so a stagger of individual commanders would be somewhat complicated. Furthermore, the Australian Army did try, for a period of time, three-year commands, and sufficient enough in duration that we, a deduction was made. Three years in command is a very trying period for the individual and their families. And furthermore, the Army, particularly its chief, was not satisfied it was providing sufficient opportunities for personnel, officers in particular, to experience command, which is seen as a key professional milestone to generate more senior appointments. The other way we look at offset, and some of us have worked in strategic HR on this panel, we're now at a date, so we won't comment on that, is, and in the handover takeover documentation directive from the Chief Army, he recognises it's not just command, it's key staff. So creating an offset between the leadership team, which is the Commander and the Sergeant Major, and then the key staff that support them, such as the Chief Personnel Officer, Chief Operations Officer, we have different names for them, speaking in plain speak, that's equally as important, legal officers, et cetera. And documentation of what are the key matters, and hence you have a directive on what should be considered by commanders in the handover.
And Lieutenant Colonel Hickey and Brigadier Groat, can you give the commissioners the benefit of your views about that, specifically in relation to RMC Duntrune, given your relatively recent tenure at that institution?
Specifically handovers, Counsel, is that where your question is concerning?
Well, I'll touch on, I'm going to turn to handovers, but in terms of the corporate knowledge that exists within the institution, having regard to the staggered positioning of people such as Regimental Sergeant Majors and the like, how beneficial or otherwise that's been, from your perspective, in terms of having an understanding of the historical or legacy issues that are faced by the facility?
Yeah, of course. I mean, the, we try and get the staffing right wherever possible, as you've, as we reiterated, the challenges we have with that. We do have an offset within the headquarters or the key positions across both the headquarters and across Duntrune, that's absolutely paramount. But we don't just land in these positions cold. We've done 20-plus years building up to these positions. We don't do command positions all the time as an officer, whether it's a commanding officer or Commandant or a Commander at any level. We might go from a staff position to a command position, and that command, that authority is resident within that position.
But you'd accept, Brigadier Groat, that there's a distinction between your competency as a Commander, that might be built up over 20 years' some experience, on the one hand, but on the other hand, your knowledge of existing issues within an institution that enable you to effectively deploy those command skills?
Yeah, absolutely. Correct.
Lieutenant Colonel Hickey, would you have anything that you would add to that?
Absolutely, Counsel. From my experience, I contend that the continuity internal to Duntrune is of more importance than the alignment of the posting for the Commandant and the commanding officer. I've lent very heavily in my first six months on my Regimental Sergeant Major, my adjutant, who whilst new to the position, was posted as an instructor last year, my deputy chief instructor, my operations officer, and my second-in-command, to enable me to effect command of the unit.
And in broad terms, how much before your tenure does theirs predate yours? How long have they been in that institution before you took command?
So for my Regimental Sergeant Major, Deputy Chief Instructor, and the adjutant, they had been in the unit for 12 months prior to my arrival. For my operations officer, second-in-command, they arrived at the same time as myself.
So they don't have certainly a longitudinal knowledge of RMC Duntrune? It is relatively short compass, been just one year before you started.
That is correct, although, for context, in the instance of a number of those appointments, given the role that Duntrune plays, they have previously posted to Duntrune as instructors at a previous rank, and therefore have had significant amount of exposure to how the unit conducts itself over a period of time.
And how important, in your view, is the handover from your predecessor in terms of having knowledge about existing issues within an institution?
In my opinion, is critical, and I think that is reinforced by the Chief of Army's directive that General Duncan described previously regarding command and key position handover takeover procedures.
And so why, what aspect of, why is it critical?
Because, because we're stewards of the organisation, so we might come in with thoughts and ideas about how we need to take that capability forward, but it's not necessarily grounded against the context of the unit. So that opportunity to discuss with the incumbent, the context of the unit, understand where there are opportunities and where there are risks, so that you can set a realistic plan for the unit going forward.
And in terms of the form that handover takes, there's a particular document that we'll come to in a minute. Is that the document, the subject of the directive you're just talking about?
That is correct.
What about, what accompanies that document? Is there a period of time in transition between you and your predecessor to talk through those issues, or is it simply the handover of the document?
No. In the instance of my handover with Lieutenant Colonel Allison, we commenced what I would describe as informal engagement from late April of 2022. A number of touchpoints across a couple of key events. But if you were to describe a more formal, where I was parading at Duntrune every day, that commenced on the first week of December, the week immediately after the IG ADF audit, for a period of two weeks, where I was alongside Lieutenant Colonel Allison every day for multiple hours, receiving in-briefs from the respective sub-units and getting an understanding of the context of the unit, as I previously described.
And is this your first posting as CO?
Correct.
Perhaps I might ask you then, Brigadier Groat or Major General Duncan, is that two-week handover period something that is common within defence?
It is.
Okay.
I would actually say that's an exemplar, two weeks, in person.
And so what would you consider to be standard?
So routinely, commanding officers attend a pre-command course, where they are imbued with the Chief of Army's and the generals of the Army's directions, so they get that strategic layer. Then they would usually proceed to go to their unit for about a period of, face-to-face is encouraged, it's not always possible, but usually around a week.
Okay. Commissioners, I'm just conscious of the time, would it be convenient to have a brief adjournment now?
Certainly, we'll just have a short break and continue then. Thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaldus. Lieutenant Colonel Hickey, before the adjournment, we were talking about the handover between you and Lieutenant Colonel Allison. I just want to take you to that document now. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number two? It's def dot one-two-five-six dot triple zero two dot one-two-one-zero. Is this the handover document to which you were referring, Lieutenant Colonel Hickey?
That is correct.
And this is a handover document that is the subject of a directive, CA Directive eighteen twenty twenty-one?
That's correct.
Was there a similar document in the handover between you, Major General Duncan, and Brigadier Groat?
There was. I understand the directive may actually be dated 2022.
I see. So the, in the right-hand corner, CA Directive eighteen backslash twenty-one, that's incorrect, is it?
I understand there was a directive issued last October, but in substance, it would be, this might be the preceding year's annex.
Okay. So in terms of the military justice audit, can I ask the operator to please turn to dot one-two-one-five of the document? While that's coming up, are there any underpinning documents that come with this handover checklist?
Yes. So traditionally, the incumbent commanding officer and the respective staff at the unit will prepare a number of documents. So this checklist that is currently displayed is by no means an exhaustive list. There are a number of other documents, such as briefs on where some of the sub-units, tasks, resources, and priorities are across the unit.
So to the extent to which this particular checklist will refer to a document, you would expect to have that document provided together with the handover?
That is correct.
Okay. So if the operator could please display the row commencing last year two? I might start with you, Lieutenant Colonel Allison. This is the only reference in the document to the military justice audit that was completed in November, December of 2022?
Yes, I believe so.
Can you explain to the commissioners what is meant by the row commencing last year two?
So I believe that the tier four refers to the, and it says external to Army, refers to the IG ADF audit.
So if you turn to the previous page, dot one-two-one-four, there is a heading serial four, and then subject external environment. Am I right that that will relate to a particular matter about which you're required to give a briefing in the CA directive?
Yes, that would be correct.
And what do you understand the expression external environment to capture?
It looks to me to be matters external to the unit. For example, it lists there SADFO, Senior Australian Defence Force Officer, State and Infrastructure Group. So these are key appointments and matters that might be pertaining to those particular organisations that are not located in the unit but are important.
So if we can turn then back to the next page, dot one-two-one-five. So this is part of your external environment handover. What does the reference last year two, tier three, could you explain to commissioners what that means?
So they're the different levels of auditing that can be carried out at the unit.
And so is that a specific reference to the military justice audit, or does it capture any other type of auditing process that exists?
So there are a number of other governance audits that are carried out.
So in terms of detail, is this something that's pre-populated in the form, or is this something that you have added in?
No, that's pre-populated. The parts that have been added in are the, on the far right column.
Okay. So the sole reference in there is IG ADF Audit Report Pending. Was there any documentation about that order that was provided together with this handover document?
No, because we hadn't received the audit report as yet. So all that I had at that time was my handwritten notes.
And in terms of your handwritten notes, you're talking there to your handwritten notes of the interim assessment that came from IG ADF?
That's correct, in the outbrief.
And can you give the commissioners an overview of the extent of the briefing you gave to- you gave to Lieutenant Colonel Hickey about that interim assessment?
I referred to my notes and I discussed all of the matters that had been raised with me by the audit team.
And what about in terms of the recommended corrective actions and suggestions? Had you been briefed as part of the interim assessment about those particular issues?
Yes and no. So broadly, yes, but the specifics of the recommendations, no. I hadn't been briefed on those. It was more a discussion in themes that required rectification.
So given the extent of your interim briefing, were you able to give Lieutenant Colonel Hickey any specific recommendations about steps that should be taken to address the matters arising out of the military justice audit report?
I was. Not the specifics that were contained in the report that later arrived in April, I believe it was. But I was certainly able to talk to the themes, the immediate action that were being undertaken by the current staff, and the focus areas for him until the audit report arrived.
And in terms of immediate action, how could you take immediate action when you hadn't had the benefit of the detail of the recommendations?
So the individual members of the audit team who had different specialties, engaged with the particular staff in those areas and provided them what the recommendations were going to be. So some of those things could be actioned immediately, while the detail of others didn't arrive until the report.
So there had been some specific briefing on recommendations, but not to you directly?
Not to me directly. It was more an overview with the themes of the deficiencies rather than the specifics. They spoke to the individual people that would undertake those duties in the course of their employment.
So give me, for example, so for example, insofar as it concerns the recommendations that ultimately came out about corrective training, who received that briefing, to the best of your knowledge, from IGADF?
So the regimental sergeant major received that briefing. They did discuss corrective training with me in the outbrief.
And did you request briefings from each of your subordinates in terms of their own independent briefings with the IGADF auditors?
Yes.
Okay. And were you able to have any of those briefings documented in terms of file notes or the like?
Only in my own notes, and many of them took place with Lieutenant Colonel Hickey.
And in terms of the assistance of military justice audits like this, or any of your sort of pulse checks, is the time between when the audit is conducted and the results that are received a disadvantage in terms of you being able to take immediate action to implement change about concerns that are identified?
Yes, I think it's a disadvantage.
Okay. Now, if we can turn to dot 1227 of this document, it concerns work, health and safety. What do you understand that to capture?
So the, in the far right column there, where it says work, health and safety, there's a file reference, which has a number of documents with all of the risk assessments for the unit.
And I guess the reason I'm raising this is there doesn't seem to be any mention in this particular handover about the substantive issues that were raised in the audit about poor staffing levels and impact on staff. Is that something you're specifically required to comment on as part of the handover?
It was certainly a topic of much discussion, whether, and I accept that it's not recorded here. One of the particular topics of discussion was psychosocial hazards and the recent, when I say recent, it was several months old, but the assessment that had been done by our workplace health and safety manager.
But in terms of identifying psychosocial hazards, is that, is that something that the CA directive stipulates you give a handover on? Or is that something that you gave a handover on within your own discretion?
Within my own discretion.
Okay. Do you think that's a deficiency in the form in terms of ensuring a complete handover of that type? Like accepting that someone such as yourself has obviously been proactive in terms of addressing those issues. Do you think there would be benefit in having a handover document such as this that specifically captures psychosocial hazards for staff and members of a unit?
I agree, that would be helpful. And my understanding is from some of the work that I've done this year that more prominence is being given to understanding psychosocial hazards. And I would anticipate that that would be included in future handover documents.
It is a little concerning though, isn't it, that it's 2023, this is not a new issue, that it's only now been put in as part of the governance arrangements?
I think there has always been a focus on people, but articulating it as a psychosocial hazard and as a risk in particular in unit command handovers. I think it's just that it's being described as that. I think it's something that's always been part of our culture in leadership positions.
But there is a benefit in terms of recognising psychosocial hazards as a specific workplace health and safety issue for which commanders ought to be accountable.
I agree.
If I could, can I ask, in terms of the handover, did you give any handover in relation to the Select Incident Inquiry Report that's been the subject of examination today, or the outcomes from the CDF briefing in relation to that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And without going into the detail of the findings of the report, what form did that briefing take?
I was quite deeply affected by the report. And so even in those informal discussions prior to the full-time period of our handover, we discussed the report and that was, I guess, could characterise our handover. Whenever there was something that I thought it was worth sharing, the way that I was thinking about something, or that it might continue on into the future, then I would call Brian and we would discuss what was going on with that. Because I was mindful that I was a steward and I would be handing over. In this particular case, during our handover in person, I gave him a printed copy of that report and he read it.
Did you have any input into the SIP document to which I took Major General Duncan before?
Yes, I did.
Do you agree with all the stakeholder comments and proposed implementation actions to which I took Major General Duncan? And let me just give you one specific example. This is in relation to recommendation five about critique, marking and assessment of exercises, that the assessment practices are conducted in a fair, equitable and supportive manner?
Yes.
So that, that reflects your view?
It does reflect my view. I think, so there's been a real journey of change in the way that we, both the curriculum at Duntrun, but also the way that we operate. And I described it a little bit before with the reframing of instructors as coaches and mentors. But that, that describes everything that we do. It's about a learning culture where people feel supported to do their best. It's a team approach. So when I got this report, many of those changes had already been made. And that was just based on the requirements. And Major General Duncan talked about them before, about the sort of capability requirements. But more importantly than that was, I've got a long, quite a bit of experience in the people system. And it's my preference to be people-centric in everything that I do. So in this appointment, it was about being learner-centric. How can we support the trainees to get through the training? So we can, so they have a good experience and they're able to pass the way that they've been treated on in our organisation.
And so would it be right to understand that reflected your decision-making in terms of specifically providing the report to your successor? And talking through the matters that emerged out of that report?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I then switch back to the military justice audit report? Lieutenant Colonel Hickey, you were the recipient of that report?
That is correct.
And that report was provided to you in or about April 2023?
That is correct.
In terms of responsibility for implementing the recommended actions and suggestions out of that report, who has direct responsibility for that task?
I do. As this commanding officer, I'm responsible and accountable for all actions within Duntrun.
And who are you accountable to in terms of this specific document?
I'm responsible to respond to IGADF, but also accountable to the commandant of the Land Combat College for the implementation of the corrective actions.
Brigadier Groth, how would you describe your responsibility in terms of the recommendation, recommended corrective actions and suggestions coming out of the military justice audit report?
Yeah, my, my headquarters need to ensure that it happens and provide oversight of those recommendations.
So your accountability is to ensure that Lieutenant Colonel Hickey discharges his responsibilities in terms of the document?
Correct.
Now, the military justice audit report required that RMC Duntrun provided written confirmation of its implementation of recommended corrective actions and suggestions by 11 July 2026. There is a prescribed form for that response, and that form is described as an NXF.
That is correct.
Just want to take you to that. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number 26? It's def.1256.02.1210. And while that's coming up, oh, it's come up now, can you please give the commissioners a brief overview of the steps involved in terms of you compiling the responses to the suggestions and recommended corrective actions?
Certainly. So as Lieutenant Colonel Allison described, I was aware that there were material deficiencies in the way that Duntrun was administering its military justice. So on arrival back from the reduced tempo period, we established a small team to look into this matter. Commonly referred to them in the military as a tiger team. And we would meet fortnightly to review the recommended corrective actions.
Can I just stop you there? So the, you didn't get the report till April. Did that tiger team come into existence before or after you received the report?
It came into existence before because we were aware, as Lieutenant Colonel Allison described, that there were deficiencies in certain areas. And we were preemptively getting ahead to ensure that we were compliant.
And in terms of that preemptively getting ahead, obviously from the interim assessment, you had some understanding of some of the recommendations that would be made. Did you have any ongoing engagement with IGADF to get more specificity about what the recommended corrective actions would be?
No, it was not until April, as you described, that we got the full report, that I had the full specificity of the report.
Okay. So you have this dedicated team in place to address what you anticipated would be the likely recommended corrective actions. Can we take, for example, those recommendations that specifically concern corrective training? Operator, can you please display that document at dot 0003 and expand upon row six? Can you give the commissioners an overview of the steps you took to address this particular recommendation?
Certainly. So recommendation six was one that I became aware of when the report from the Inspector General, the ADF, arrived in April. From there, along with that small team.
So just stop you there. Did you have any awareness from your handover about corrective training as being an area of risk for you as a commanding officer?
I was aware of it being a risk from the 2019 report and discussions with Lieutenant Colonel Allison, but not the specificity of the recommendation six.
And when you're talking about the 2019 report, are you talking about the previous military justice audit report?
That is correct.
But in terms of that previous military justice audit report, and we can go to it if necessary, but am I correct to understand that really concerned documentation of issues pertaining to corrective training as opposed to its application?
That is my understanding without the document in front of me.
So this is, this recommendation six is really about not just the documentation of recommended corrective, corrective training rather, but its appropriate application. As part of your handover, were you aware of the application of corrective training as being an area of risk for you as CO?
I was aware that there might be some views within the unit that it was not being applied appropriately by some of the trainees.
What about, for example, the findings that came out of the Select Incident Inquiry Report that squarely raised concerns about how trainees might respond to assessments and critiques of their work? That didn't give you cause for concern to be watchful of how corrective training was applied?
I was, again, I was aware of that report, as Lieutenant Colonel Allison described. I would describe, I was aware and extremely conscious of how the instructors interact and engage with the trainees across a broad remit of their duties. And that encompasses not only corrective training, but also feedback for the conduct of assessments.
Okay. So focusing specifically on row six, you say you first became aware of this in sort of granular detail when you received the report in April 2023. The middle column denotes the response that you took to that corrective, sorry, that recommendation. Can you explain to commissioners the intent of that corrective action?
Certainly. So as part of the new Defence Force Discipline Act, a commanding officer is now required to review all discipline action within a unit monthly to ensure that it is being audited and that the military justice is being applied equitably across the unit. That goes to what we're describing in the military as charges. Once we received the IGADF report in April, I gave direction to the Regimental Sergeant Major, who is responsible to me for the execution of discipline within the unit, that we would incorporate the corrective training register, which we're required to have on record, so that each month I could review the amount of corrective training being issued to trainees and make sure that it was equitable across the unit.
Just to make sure I understand, is what is in the middle column, does that reflect an existing requirement on you as CO? Or is it a specific initiative in response to this recommended corrective action?
It outlines a new requirement of all commanding officers from the 13th of December 2022. But the new initiative is to incorporate the corrective training component as part of that monthly audit.
So you've effectively extended the reach of that particular requirement to specifically capture corrective training?
That is correct.
Now, in terms of, so this response was provided on the 11th of July. In terms of a response either from IGADF or the commandant or up your chain of command in terms of sort of service chiefs, what curiosity or testing exists about your proposed corrective action in response to these recommended corrective actions?
So in the instance of the NXF, as you've described, there was regular engagement with the commandant staff, the staff on the headquarters of the Land Combat College about our proposal. A lot of that was through the chief of staff, as well as the legal officer within the headquarters. There was discussions I was having with legal officers in Headquarters Forces Command, as well as periodic engagements with the team at the Inspector General ADF.
So are they, are they, would it be right to characterise that as assistance for you in terms of preparing this response?
Correct.
Having prepared this response, is there any entity that interrogates the aptness of it?
As part of this audit, because Duntrun was found to be materially deficient, the unit will be re-audited within a period of 12 months, and that will occur in November this year.
So the sort of, the check and balance is in effect the re-audit process that will happen later this year?
That is correct.
Nothing further, thank you, commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. I just, what I've taken from this afternoon, I guess, is that at RMC Duntrun, the commandant and commanders have very significant responsibilities. And from what I've heard, insufficient resources to do the job optimally. And I, and I think what I've heard is that in such circumstances, the options are to put the position up to chain of command and then when the opportunity arises, perhaps put it up to others like IGADF. And Major General, I think you said that commanders are trained to outline And Major General, I think you said that commanders are trained to outline, you know, what they have to do and assess the risks and consequences of a particular circumstance, and then they either need to adjust what they're doing or to seek additional resources. So I guess my question is, looking at this issue of the staffing resources within RMC and the challenges, what adjustments were able to be made?
Thanks, Commissioner. Primer Facey, the Australian Army recognised that it was, as a system, seeking a learning level, as we call it, that was probably not warranted at this stage. So in plain speaking, you might call it overtraining. So that's where we looked at the available resources, and this is part of the Army's Training Transformation Programme. And at the senior most levels, accepted by the Chief of the Army, he agreed that at Abenicio, which is the school in question, RMC Duntrune, and then in initial employment training, we would no longer train to job-ready standard, that a job-ready standard can only be achieved in the workplace. So we dropped the learning level across the Army training system as an example of we didn't have sufficient resources, and by design, the system can't mirror the workplace. So I'd say that was probably the most strategic decision taken on how to adjust the risk that was presenting itself. We no longer had a large number of people able to support training.
So sorry, can I just be clear, when did that happen?
That was finalised in 2021, at the layer above all the training centres of the Australian Army. It was presented to the Army Board and endorsed by the Chief of the Army. Now, that drew significant interest from deployable commanders, and they were assured that the Army training system was by design set like that. We had just chosen to not operate it like that. So we were operating above the capacity that we needed to, and that was drawing resources away. So that would be the most macro change in the system. I tried to touch on, Commissioner, some of the other examples that Lieutenant Colonel Allison and I talked about. So if there were insufficient resources, what would we stop doing amidst a period of transformation? And change is quite challenging for most people. We'd like surety, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, basic needs. I'd like to be able to come to work and do a good job and know what I've got to do. I would say it was a complicated time for our command period. I mentioned the COVID disruptions. Our minister at the time directed that we would train through COVID. When the rest of Australia was locked down in 2020 and in 2021 in particular, we still trained over 7,000 Australians in the Abenicio Training Schools of Duntrune and Kapuka. Quarantining people, quarantining staff, that created another level of complexity. And if there are times when I thought I couldn't achieve the transformation timeline set for me by my commander, I would report back to him and say, sir, I can't do this. Could you either give me this? And I was able to, for example, I asked for cash so that I could employ contractors to assist me in a function that I did not have Australian Army personnel or Australian public servants to do, as another example. So they were a couple of examples, Commissioner, if that satisfies your question.
Well, it certainly gives me an indication. I guess I'm just trying to put, and because the timeframes are changing, and I don't have the benefit of the detailed knowledge, but it doesn't sound, and I take on board what you're saying, but it doesn't sound that Lieutenant Colonel's, from Lieutenant Colonel Allison's testimony this afternoon, that it was entirely successful at relieving the pressures. Because what I heard was that you were exhausted and burnt out, that there was challenges with fatigue management. And I just wonder, like, I accept what you're saying, that there were changes being made, but, I mean, is it still the case that the staff would say they're exhausted and burnt out at the end of their time, that there isn't enough resources to do the job?
Commissioner, I would agree that some staff feel very fatigued at the end of the year, the calendar year, the training year, as we would describe it. For context, though, as General Duncan and Lieutenant Colonel Allison described, Duntrune traditionally gets very high-performing individuals that are consistently striving for excellence. So I see part of my role, and I know Lieutenant Colonel Allison was of a similar ilk, of trying to, at times, focus and prioritise that excellence so that it gets the best outcome for the unit, for Army and for the trainees. And we're required, except risk, that we may not be able to achieve the level of innovation and development in other areas as a result.
So, sorry, if I've correctly understood what you're saying, the problem's not the Army's, it's the people who are trying too hard?
I would, Commissioner, I would describe the problem as it's multifaceted. At times, sometimes the people are striving too hard or striving for excellence in certain areas, that sometimes we need to allow them to take a break, spend time with their families, and accept that a level of incremental improvement in certain areas may not be beneficial to the individual, the unit and to Army.
Do you think that the current circumstance meets work health and safety standards?
At Duntrune, my belief at the moment, in line with the Workplace Health and Safety Advisory, is yes.
Major General, you spoke, I think someone spoke about the current requirements of a commander, 1,700, I think, different elements you spoke about?
That was a discussion had at my commander's recall of his formation commanders, people like myself at the time and now Brigadier Groch, where an audit had been done by a fellow formation commander, the commander of the 17th Brigade, and he had audited the governance and other requirements that a commanding officer had to report to before they even had to do their other job in generating Army capability. You could say, I'll correct myself there, those governance requirements are very important to generate capability, but there was a view that they had become so voluminous that it was difficult to keep track of what they were, where to find them and how to resource them from a systems perspective.
Well, that essentially was going to be my question. I appreciate it's good to actually understand what's required, et cetera, but if that's what you need to do on top of the real job, it does seem voluminous, and I have to ask, is it all necessary? Because I think we're very good in modern society at requiring things to be done and documented and what have you, but sometimes the, you know, the cost benefit doesn't exactly weigh up. Do you think it could be reduced? Could it be streamlined without losing, you know, the clear intent?
Commissioner, I do agree it could be streamlined, and my understanding, post the Defence Strategic Review in the Department of Defence, the Associate Secretary is looking at an enterprise prioritisation scheme. It's very complicated for any enterprise, would be my assessment. Part of the Defence Strategic Review, you'll recall, the government instructed defence would absorb more risk, and that is because of the changed requirements on defence, the paucity of resource, particularly as highlighted by council people in her deductions. So on a footing at enterprise level, this is being looked at, and my understanding in the Australian Army is the Chief of Staff to Army Headquarters is in particular looking at how to map and interrogate data better to this end.
I could add to that, Commissioner, if you would like.
Please.
So we have commenced an initiative this year called the GIST, Joint Issues Implementation Support Tool. What we have found is that historically, each of the services have had almost a stove-piped approach to tracking the implementation and assurance of various reviews and inquiries, most of them just being managed on spreadsheets. And so what we have done this year is sought to work in collaboration with Navy, Army, Air Force, Joint Capabilities Group, Joint Operations Command and the new C-PERS organisation. We've invested $250,000 in the creation of a new data system that is defence-owned, well-established through the Genesis IT system. And the aim of that is to allow our people to be able to longitudinally track these recommendations and longitudinally keep on top of the requirements to-do assurance and ask that question, did we do what we said we would do? Was it effective? Is it still effective? And being able to then also look at some of the themes and trends over time. That project is due to go live in December of this year, and we see it as a fantastic opportunity for all of those organisations to better manage the longitudinal ability to look at these recommendations. And I think the other piece to it is, given what IT system it is, Genesis, it's also linked with our Microsoft system, so it allows you to task people via email, provide automatic reminders via email, and then we still need the humans to do the analysis of the trends, but it does mean that we can follow up on recommendations and be able to make sure that we're still achieving them. And occasionally, some of the recommendations actually work at cross purposes. So you may have one report that says we should do one thing and another report that says the opposite, and trying to unpack that and better understand why that is the case. So that's a project that I'm overseeing, and I'm really excited about the potential for it.
I guess we talked about the workforce shortages. You said all senior leaders have recruitment retention at the front of mind. We talked about wanting to give trainees at RMC a good experience and so they can pass that on in terms of how they've been treated. But I guess I'm wondering, in the context of what we've heard today, which I have to say doesn't sound particularly pretty, inasmuch as the challenge of the work, the trainees must see it, it doesn't seem to me like it's a particularly good advertisement for recruitment and retention of new young officers.
Commissioner, I think the trainees do see it sometimes, but in the majority, our focus is always on them. And so a lot of this is absorbed into the staff systems rather than, you know, the focus is always on learning and how we can better facilitate it. So I don't believe that the trainees that are going through are exposed to it in the way that you've heard today.
Well, I certainly hope that's the case because it wasn't particularly encouraging hearing it today. My last question is just, I guess I was somewhat bemused to hear that there's guidance being given on how to prepare for an audit, and I'm very attuned, I guess, to preparation for audits in the hospital system. We have accreditation audits, and they used to be a very big to-do. They've now moved to spot audits so that you have to be constantly ready for an audit that might occur with 24 hours' notice. Is there any thought or prospect of such a change potentially, you know, being made in relation, and I know I'm not, it's IGADF, and I can ask the IGADF later this week, but just your views about whether or not that would actually be feasible as the recipient, on the receiving end of the audit?
Commissioner, I think any new initiative is worth looking at. For context, what I described as the preparation required for the military justice audit for Duntrune at the end of 2023, I've currently got a reserve officer, so in a part-time capacity. Based on analysis of that particular officer's workload, they've currently done in excess of 60 hours of work to prepare us for the audit in the end of the year. We expect that will be in excess of about 160 hours. So any means to reduce the workload on units to get a clearer snapshot of where they are without the preparation, and any means to expedite the feedback loop to the unit, I think would be worth considering.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
I have no questions, thank you.
I'm happy to hear from any of you in answer to this, but has, in your time, are you aware of anyone doing, are you familiar with a zero-based assessment of the staffing level, where if somebody comes in and assumes that there's no one in place, assess the task or the mission that you have in front of you, work out what numbers you actually need to get it done, and then suggest a staffing level that meets that assessment? Zero-based assessment, has that ever happened in your lifetime?
Thanks, Commissioner. I might offer you, and then I'll refer to Tracy. So in our time, I did no less than two such assessments, and one was very comprehensive. In my first year, it became very readily apparent, we weren't functioning in the way that I understood I needed to, to meet my higher commander's directions, and we weren't functioning that way because our form wasn't right. That resulted in the Chief of the Army grinning. We were a very different organisation. In 2020, I commanded three colonels in their headquarters who commanded three commanding officers. So I demonstrated that that legacy system of a middle layer of command was not doctrinal, it was unnecessary, and it was further degrading my ability, my technical authorities, to see what COs were doing and how the training was coming about. So that was the first year. In the second year, and we progressed this into the end of 2022, it was quite complex, we did what's called a capability review. So a wholesome review in a transformed training system of the functions that we should all be doing, and then what the form needed to look like. That review was handed over to Brigadier Groch, and the Chief of Army made a determination on that this year, and part of it is manifest in the renaming of the college from the Royal Military College of Australia. And I described how in my tenure, the college was expanded from three units to seven, and now it is the Land Combat College, still with seven units. So we did that, and I don't know if you wanted to add?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. That capability review that Major General Duncan refers to has landed sort of quarter one, quarter two this year, so we're in the process of rolling that out, and it's a more streamlined command relationship across all seven units. So I'm very confident that I can have more agility to reach into those units, provide support where required, particularly in a constrained staffing environment that we find ourselves in. And that's not just the Land Combat College, that's obviously across defence in particular Army. So an example of that might be, I can slew effort across the units more easily where I see staffing shortages. So for example, I can take some people out of the headquarters and put them into Duntrune for a couple of weeks or a couple of months to do a certain job to reinforce that effect. And I can also move force elements or humans around the other training centres. So another example might be Kapuka, who we're responsible for, have not as many, not as much throughput because of our issues with recruiting, but I can slew some of those corporals across to another school to help out and vice versa. Does that make sense, Commissioner?
It does, and I'm grateful for that, and I understand the function before form, which you clearly did. But did you arrive at a point where the numbers of, forgive my language, bottoms on seats wasn't enough? Did you arrive at a conclusion or an understanding that you actually needed more people?
Commissioner, we did, and when people weren't forthcoming, we started to look at what do we need to adjust, and we've tried to provide some examples to the commissions today. And then I would like to add, if I may, at the enterprise level, following the Defence Strategic Review, the inaugural Chief of Personnel and the Vice Chief of Defence Force are now looking at the enterprise, a zero look at the people system, and that will be quite a complicated body of work, but it will fundamentally look at where the ADF personnel are and whether that is the right where the ADF personnel are and whether that is the right support function and person to get after the authorities of the three-star that they support.
Sorry, is that across the organisation or just the training area?
It is across the entire Australian Defence Force to ensure that we have an integrated force ready for the geostrategic circumstances we face.
Thank you. Just one other point. And I think Lieutenant Colonel Allison mentioned earlier in relation to there was a trial of a three-year tenure rather than a two-year tenure, and I know it's been discussed in the past, but I just wondered whether during that process or that assessment, whether it worked or not, how much thought was given to the impact on the families? I appreciate it's hard on the individual, the member, you know, being really everworked in a place where the tempo is so fast. But what consideration, if any, was given to the impact on the families of, I think everyone's aware of this and we've discussed it, in terms of, many people have come to the Commission to say that moving every two years, their kids don't have any friends because they go from school to school to school. You've heard all this before and you've probably had your own experiences, I'm not asking you to get rid of that, but what consideration in that process was dedicated to the family side rather than just the work impact on the individual, if any? Or was it not that sort of assessment?
I believe that consideration was given to families and the health and wellbeing of the individual commanders as well. I might add that Duntrun has never been a three-year, my understanding is that Duntrun has not been a three-year command tenure, that it remained two years, even in that trial period of three years because of the different demands, I suppose. Families are key to this. My own children were counting down the days until I finished my appointment and they could have me back. So I think that's at the top of everybody's mind.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it from us. Mr Fordham, do you have any issues?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Miss Longbottom?
Nothing further, thank you, Commissioners. May the witnesses please be excused from their summons?
Yes, you're excused from your summons today. Thank you for your evidence, thank you for the preparation you've put in, and we appreciate your candour. Okay, thank you. If there's no other issues from anyone, we'll adjourn to 8.30, I think, tomorrow morning.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will adjourn to 8.30am Tuesday, the 5th of September.